October 12th, 2023 Strategic Plan Meeting. Rural Coffee's Rose.
Mayor Herndon.
Present.
I'm Mayor Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Borelio.
Present.
Councilmember Serrato.
Present.
Staff with present.
Okay, thank you. Plenipotentiaries, please. Hi.
Hi. Plenipotentiaries to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Yeah, this time I'd be looking for approval of the agenda as posted or amended.
Soon.
And a second on bigger. All right. Item four is public comment. The public may address the council on any items of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of this state. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to the city staff or placed on subsequent meeting agendas. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make public comments? Seeing none here and seeing none online, we'll close public comment and move to item five. This is our regular agenda, and this is the Strategic Plan Implementation Workshop and Update. Rebecca.
So Stacy here from Citygate. Stacy Christo, she, you probably recognize her from the last time she was here when we adopted our actual strategic plan. As part of the 2324 budget, we included some competition dollars in there and contracted with Citygate again to help us through that implementation phase. So staff and council have been working with Stacy over the last month or so. And so she is here to help facilitate this next step in our journey.
It's all me now?
Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. It's been a year. I appreciate the weather. Last time I was here doing a brutal storm. So this is awesome. Thank you for setting that weather up for me. And I'm just going to jump right in because I've had some requests to finish early for some appointments. So I'm going to do the best that I can to kind of scoot through this. There'll be three phases today. So Phase One is the implementation element. We're going to talk about some stakeholder interviews and surveys that we did, implementation strategies. We'll walk through that first section in about 45 minutes or so. Second section will be innovation. So we'll talk about what innovation means. That is part of your vision and mission is to be more innovative and think about innovation. So we're going to do a really fun, interactive engagement on innovation. And then the third section is going to be executive leadership, communication, roles and responsibilities, and some of those kinds of trainings was the results of what came out of a lot of the survey data. So that's what that looks like. So this is a quick check-in. And I'm very hopeful the last bullet that we actually have today. And if we don't, I have music and giveaways to help. So I find that if I give the little pieces away, I always, yes. And we fed you, so that should work too, right? Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and jump in. I gave you all a hard copy, so if you want to take notes with it. I apologize in advance. There's one page that's missing at it. I tend to be one of those people that edit to the last minute. So there's one page missing on that printout. But Rebecca will have email version of the whole presentation. So this is, I gave you what the agenda looks like. We're going to take maybe two breaks. But you know, feel free, if you need to during the session, just use a restroom or whatever. Or if you all are like, we're brain dead, it's an hour and a half. Stacy, we won't hold five minutes. Always good. You know, raise your hand. Interactive, as they say. So scheduled to apply, but we'll see what we can do to try to bring it up closer to that. So we did a confidential survey, and we did both qualitative and quantitative approach to it. So open-ended questions as well as some fill-ins. We had 19 responses. That included staff and the city council. And the first question was an open-ended question. What do you believe is the biggest challenge for implementing the various elements of the strategic plan? And later on, we are going to talk about what those challenges are, what are the roadblocks and those kinds of things. So this question was specific to them personally. So when you were answering this question, this was, what do I think the challenge is for me on how to implement anything? So obviously, a high count on having the time or staff challenged, financial resources, and having an agreement or consensus on what we're supposed to do, support from the council, some skills and training, transparency, and then some communication effectiveness. So those were sort of the top things that came out of it. And I will say that that's common. You know, this is pretty much what you typically do here. So you're right on target as far as that goes. Especially, not only is public safety, you know, sort of in that crisis mode of staffing and those challenges, recruitment and retention, but it's happening throughout organizations. We're seeing it really heavy in planning. We're seeing it really heavy in engineers and public works. So we're noticing it especially in smaller jurisdictions. They're actually thinking about it as a topic, I think, for the league because it's quite challenging. So as you see staffing come up, we're having to get more and more creative with what that looks like. So with that, this, I think, is on a delay, right? Yep, there it is. Okay. So what do you believe the biggest challenge for implementing the various elements of the strategic plan for the organization are? So thinking a more macro level instead of micro. Again, staffing related, the things that came up. People believe the staffing levels, they're not where they need to be. Hiring staff and the turnover, so retention. Lokey came up a couple of times. Relationships, city council and staff and what that might look like. There's a couple of different things. Having good communication, understanding, support, tasks, et cetera. Communication always comes up, also very common. And then on public engagement, there was a couple of comments related to how we engage the public and what that looks like. And we will definitely be going over more of that later on. You all do have a copy, most of you, of the full survey. That can be emailed to you as well. So Rebecca just has the full survey. But you should have a copy of the full result. So if you want to see every question and all of them you want, since you're welcome to. And this was, as you probably know, but I'll say for the public's sake, this was a confidential survey that took place. And it was done through, all online through Citygate site. So, and I conducted the interviews myself. So, and I remember everything everybody said. Okay, so what two tools would be the most beneficial to support you while implementing the strategic plan? I always love this question. You know, communication, again, comes up first. You know, what is the clear communication? And that's broad, right? That's a big topic. Because communication can mean a lot of different things. Some of it was just being updated. Some of it came up again with relations with council. You know, forming maybe a work group and what that might look like. Again, time and staffing. Perhaps some additional skills and training. That comes up often. Some more financial resources, having some clear goals. So you can kind of see what those top items were. What is the biggest concern as it relates to implementing the strategic plan? You know, sometimes our biggest pain points. So it's interesting. I liked the diversity of how people answered this question because it wasn't just all about staffing. Some people worried that they're not going to get it finished. You know, that, you know, we're working so hard. We have this awesome plan. But are we actually going to be able to accomplish what we set out to accomplish? Has the community bought into? Do they understand it? Again, back to relations. There's budget, there's MOUs. You know, collection systems, public safety, consensus. So there's a lot of things to look at here. So it's just, it's good information that people share. So I know this looks small on the screen, and I did put some purpose so that way people at home or that want to maybe take a snapshot, they can kind of have a whole picture. I highlighted the blue because those were sort of the top three where there was the strongest agreement. Creative approaches are important element to successfully implementing the strategic plan. Majority of the organization felt and people that we spoke with felt that absolutely that to be creative is an important factor. And as you know, innovation is part of your values. So that they were familiar with the implementation strategies and approaches. That's actually great to hear, to know that you actually have messaged well throughout the organization that, you know, they understand what the strategies and approaches are and that their supervisor has been supportive during the implementation process. So a lot of neutrality, but also some good high marks there. So that's great to hear because messaging is always really key. I highlighted the two in purple because they just speak to communication in the organization in general. So those were just highlighted, you know, as a standout. And I did highlight that there are the question related to being innovative or creative approaches to implementing the plan so far. 26% believe that they are, has been. That's great to see. We don't always get to see higher marks than that. And then there's a lot of neutrality that, you know, maybe not necessarily, but just had no comments on it. Kind of more of the bigger concerns. If you look at the yellow on the very bottom, I believe there was positive communication between elected officials, staff, and the community related to the strategic plan. That was the most disagreed statement. So that seems to be the biggest pain point and concern wrapped around that. That also includes council being supportive of staff during implementation. So the 19 individuals that had significant marks, as well as about 42% were sort of neutral on the subject. Then the items in green, just underneath that, it went on about clear communication. So I think we're all seeing a theme, right? I feel like there's a word I keep saying. So I think that there's a theme to all of this, which is good because our afternoon session is going to tie into a lot of these things. So we asked about the tracking tool. And so one of the questions we wanted to follow up was, are you even currently using a tracking tool? Everybody has a different perspective on what tracking tools are or if they're helpful. So almost 80% said that they were not using any type of current tracking tool. But then also, we wanted to ask the question, well, do you think a tracking tool would actually be helpful? And so, you know, six people said, yes, it would. You know, a couple of people said, no. Some are maybe. Some have no idea. What does that mean? Is that more work? So, you know, kind of a mixed response. And, you know, as we all know, everybody works differently. And so there's, you know, different tools out there to sort of thinking about as large as the action perspective goes. And so if you need to cut me off or anybody asks a question, please do so. Leadership effectiveness. Is there effective leadership overseeing the strategic plan implementation? Almost 80% was yes, that's awesome to hear and to see. Typically higher than normal, I will say. I typically see that number a little bit less. So that's wonderful that there seems to feel consensus that there's good leadership and oversight of this. Budget support. Do you believe the city has the necessary budget to support the strategic plan? Almost 60% thought that you did, and that's a good thing. There's some maybes, some neutrals, a little bit of no's. So generally speaking, it's good to know that how people perceive the fiscal stability of the organization. So there's a good, there's belief that there is good fiscal stability, that you have the money to execute the things that you need to execute. So whether that's true or not, is a different topic. But right now, there is belief that that is the case. So out of that, obviously themes, right? The themes that came out of that, we heard communications a whole lot of different times. When I was developing themes, it's not only from the survey data that came back, but also the interviews that I conducted for public officials and some city staff. And under communications, because that is a very big and broad topic, all of these things came up. The different styles of communication, the stories we tell, how we trust or not trust. Also, this goes with the community. Are we being transparent? Is there unity among the staff, among the council, with the community? Are we clear? Are we showing respect? Is there empowerment, consistency, fairness, focus, consensus? So those are all the words, sort of the trigger pop words that came up through all of the data. Relationships, building relationships and having good relationships was also a theme. Staffing. Rules and responsibilities. What is actually your role as leaders or as staff? And what responsibilities that are tied into that? Good leadership. Training came up quite a bit, and also innovation. So from this slide is where we leaned and I worked with the city and made recommendations as to what this afternoon's training should look like. So you're going to see a lot of the training that is going to look at, address, board, and talk about all this stuff. So can I get a woo-hoo? We're all very excited about it. So I'm going to keep going unless there's any quick questions in between. We're good. Nope, no questions. Okay. All right, so this is just a recap. You know, it's hard sometimes for the community or staff or anyone to remember, you know, where we are. And, you know, this was sort of your commitment. This was your commitment to each other as council, your commitment to the staff, the staff's commitment, the commitment to the community. And these are all the things that were determined what your vision was, right? Preserving the rich history, providing safe and thriving community, devoted families, business, and visitors. Your mission, provide, you know, municipal services, infrastructure, high quality of life, trusted leadership. I italicize that. Accountability, efficiency. Efficiency for the benefit of our community. Everything we talk about when we're ineffective in communication or trust or innovation or those other things, we are not being efficient as we can. So those are some of the things we're going to talk about today. Primary guiding priorities. Stability, economic development, technology, infrastructure, and public safety. And then core values, efficiency. There's that word again. Accountability, there's that word again. Resiliency, great word. Proactivity, trust and innovation. Trust and innovation are the two things that came out that needed some help, right? And when we did the discussion. And so this is the opportunity where we talk about, you know, are we in alignment? Like, we made these core values. We said, this is who we are. This is who we promised we were going to be, to the community, to each other. And are we doing that? This is that pause point where you say, are we in alignment? So, you know, good stuff. I did hear that the mission and vision, I think, was added to the agendas recently. So awesome for all of you to step forward and do that. It's important that you have this front and center so that you can live by it, understand it, repeat it. You know, this is the story and the message that goes to the community. Oh, someone I can, it's great. I know, I love it. Yeah, really nice. I like the setup in here too, so some nice transitions going on. So it's just sort of awareness. You know, some of the words I italicized that, you know, that sort of coincides with sort of the commitment that's been made publicly. So just a reminder, you know, from the strategic plan. I always love to talk about accomplishments. You know, we never, you know, are always thoughtful about saying, hey, good job. We take two seconds to say, hey, great. Oh, by the way. And then you get into the 90 things you need to do. So in the tier one, as you may recall, we had several tiers. Tier one, tier two, tier three. The tier one, it's an 18-month process. Was launched in July 1. We were three months in because obviously there was a rollout period. And there was 25 tasks specifically to that. Nine have been completed so far. Well done, city staff. And if you're not here to get the kudos, pass it on to your staff because that's awesome. There was a budget approval for that. That's already happened. 10 items are still in process and four are kind of on the horizon to come. So I just wanted to say, wow. Because I put up a lot of these numbers. I'm in jurisdictions all the time. We have 600 clients. And I will tell you that these numbers don't always look as good as this. So everybody's working hard. And I know you're doing more with less. And so impressive work. That doesn't mean I have to expect to see this again the next year. But I do want to say, you know, hats to the staff. And that, as you may know, there is also an annual report that comes to this. That was part of the accountability factors that we talked about before. So Rebecca's also shared with me that there's going to be a midway review to kind of get into more details in the meat of some of this. Like, oh, great, we accomplished this. What were those tasks that we did again? Where are we? You know, so she's going to kind of do a midpoint and then she'll do a full report annually. So that will be forthcoming.
Because this is only from July. This is just three months in. So even though we haven't seen you for a year.
Yes, exactly. Because it ties into the budget. So typically, there's, great question. Standard rollout timeline for a strategic plan and those kinds of things, depending on the jurisdiction, resources, staffing, et cetera, is usually at least 90 days. Because there's a lot of things that have to happen in the background. Sometimes policies or procedures have to be put in place. You know, there's a lot of things, communication, things that have to happen before you can actually kind of launch into. You can't just like, oh, I need a CIP plan. Well, we have to contact other agencies. Who's out there? Let's get the RP together. There's a process. So I always like to give grace. It's like, here's a strategic plan, and everyone goes, great. So tomorrow, it's like, no, no, no. Hold on, we're going to get there. So just wanted awareness to that. But this is a lot accomplished already in a short period of time. So kudos to that and to the staff.
I have one question, and you may have already covered this. But how many people did you send the response, or excuse me, the survey to?
So we had 19, and it went to all the city staff? Yes, so there are 39? Nine? I would say six, 39.
Including council, yeah.
39 total with council and 19 responses. So pretty good percentage of that. Yeah, and we did do that last time. I gave the percentage, so you remember that. Well done. Ah, you're a green personality. Wait till we get to that. That's all good. But yeah, so that's a pretty good high percentage from a response time. So tier two is coming. I don't want anyone to have any, you know, heartburn or concern over the tier two that's coming. But tier two has 18 tasks. So for that next, you know, time allotment, there'll be a budget impact. I worked with Michelle and Rebecca a little bit, but mostly Michelle, about, you know, what some of those cost allocations. And Andy, you guys remember Andy Green, you know, my cohort at Citygate. So we sort of talked through what we potentially think likely the budget impact will be for those tier two. And obviously, once you get your annual report from tier one, you're going to be rolling into tier two. But this is kind of that, for those of you that love data and want to kind of heads up, like, hey, where are we headed? This just gives you a rough idea, like, there's 18 tasks. That's probably the budget allocation that you're going to need. Two tasks on that list. We weren't able to figure out allocations to. They weren't the ones. And most of them are one-time costs, so important to know. So these aren't going to be a lot of more recurring costs coming, a lot of one-time. So just a nice sneak peek, as you will. No data behind it yet, but more is to come later. So just wanted to share that out. So, and actually, tier two has a lot of economic development as well as that was one of your priorities. So there was a lot of economic development within that. I often get asked for people that are more detail-oriented, but also like, what are our methodologies when we figure out how to prioritize the items within the tiers? How to put budgets to them, timelines, et cetera? We use a multitude of different approaches to make sure that we're thoughtful. You know, we try to be balanced. You know, there's always that typically here that cry public safety gets a lot of the budget. Well, there's a reason, right? Because it's not a safe community, that nothing else really matters at that point. But there also has to be a road for the officers to drive down, right? And the fire trucks to drive down. There can't be potholes for them to run the cars. And so there's other things to look at, and you have to find that balanced approach. So while some years or tiers might look unbalanced and even to you or the community, please know that, you know, over that five-year period, this is a very balanced approach. You're sort of hitting all of the marks. And it doesn't always look balanced at the same time, but a balanced approach is, you know, very, very important. Looking at funding at the same time. Sequential sense, like I said earlier, you know, we can't put the cart before the horse. Sometimes you got to go through an RP process, right? You know, or sometimes the thought is, oh, there's so many just repairs in this building. We should just get all this done. Well, if it's not life and safety, maybe we just get a facilities assessment for all buildings first. That's more cost-effective instead of throwing money here. So, you know, those are kind of sequential senses, one of the things that we look at. You know, input considerations, the surveys. We analyze the data, making sure from a fiscal perspective that these are things that actually can be supported long-term. How we vote, how many people do we reach by doing what we do? So, you know, there's a lot of different approaches. Also, does it align with your values, your mission, your vision, those kinds of things? So lots of good methodologies. We use different ones. These are the things, these are the boxes we check behind the scenes. Sometimes people like to pull the curtain and go, well, how did you decide that? You know, why didn't that make sense to you? So this is how we're thinking and why we're thinking about it. So when we present something to you, it's not just because I was sitting at home with a glass of wine and hanging on to the dog saying, I think this looks like a good one. And, you know, I'm a family law enforcement, so we're going to shove more money there. No, we're looking at it as a very thoughtful strategic approach. And there's multiple people looking at it that way. And we do sit behind the scenes and talk about it and bounce things off of each other to say, hey, this feels unbalanced here. So just wanted to share that. So with that, we'll talk a little bit about best practices for implementation, turning plans into action. Well, you've done the big heavy lifting already, right? You have a strategic plan. So there's clear goals. We know what direction we're headed in. We've got a plan. We're checking boxes. It's awesome. I do caution the scope creep. Often, you know, things sneak in, whether we want them or not. You know, the neighbor calls and it's like, oh, we got to get this done. Or unfortunately, there's disasters, right? And you've got to respond. And we all know we hit the pause button for that. That's a gimme. But it's just awareness to these kinds of things and some best practices for you all to think about. This would be not my number one. But in all studies, it shows that goals are first. But I think communication comes first, so we'll consider those the top two. Having good, thoughtful, open, constant, caring communication is by far number one. If you can't communicate, nothing else matters. And your public safety, every department in this organization will tell you, communication, if that's not working, nothing else works. The commitment to the story. We're going to do a whole session this afternoon on how we tell stories and what those stories mean. And this goes to communication. The stories that we tell each other, the stories you tell the community, the stories the staff tells, the stories the community members tell each other. What is the story that we're all telling? Are we all in alignment together? Is it the right story? So we're going to talk more about that. It is by far, I've done a lot of eight-hour training sessions on this topic alone in small and big jurisdictions and in large forums. And there's a lot of good shifts that can happen here. So we're going to talk about stories and meanings a little bit more. Welcome, you snuck in. Attainability, you know, that's always one of the best practices to look at. It goes to our methodology, you know, are we tracking? Are we training? Who's our lead? What's the team look like? Always thoughtfulness to the diversity of the team. We'll learn about real particular styles later on. And often, you know, depending on people's styles. You know, I know what I love to do and don't love to do. You know, I've worked on, I was talking to your planner. I've worked on two general plans. Guess what?
I like them. Not your thing.
I love you guys. Don't ever call me a general. But it's, that's, you know, it doesn't mean I can't do one and I can't do it well. But it doesn't mean I don't love doing it. And so it's just thoughtfulness to putting teams together and putting, you know, understanding that people have passions and desires and, you know, want growth and, you know, maybe not necessarily the ways that they need to. Doesn't mean we all don't have aspects of our job we have to do. That said, it's just mindfulness, you know, as we look at attainability. Aligning with the culture and the market. You know, and that one's one of those unpredictability things, right? The market's always changing, you know. Real estate knows that, right? The market's up and down. It's going crazy. You know, we never know what's happening. Elections happen. There's so many things that affect what we can and can't do, state mandates. And so, you know, it's always thinking about, like, hey, maybe we need to stop. And the two things on tier two, the market's crazy. We're really not in alignment, you know, stopping question those things. So sometimes you have to kind of sit back and think about some of that stuff. Creating the best environment. I love that I saw some changes in here, you know, because things can get stagnant. So it's great when, is this the best environment to be in? I actually do a whole day training on just environment proximity. And environments matter, right? Just the color of the walls matter, there's been studies on that. There was a story, but I'm going to save it for later. Because I'm excited, I want to tell the story, so I'm going to save this for later. Be realistic, things might go wrong. I'm gonna, I think eventually on this PowerPoint, I change mic, things will go wrong. Things are going to go wrong. Lots of things are going to go wrong, right? And that's just the nature of what we do and the nature of the world and business and everything else. So just keep that in mind. And, you know, sometimes it's one of those, well, that didn't go as planned. And then you move on, right? You don't have to, you know, fester over it, but it's just the reality of it. Again, being flexible. I'm the innovation director, so this is my jam. I always think, you know, when you think about things, are we thinking innovatively? Are we experimenting? Are we testing the waters? Are we accepting? Failure is part of it. So we'll see. But you also have innovation as part of your values. So those are considered best practices more and more so these days. Reflect, measure, celebrate. Do we ever take the time to go, hey, did we do that well? Did that work? Is that okay? You know, like, can I take 30 seconds of my day? And I don't think people celebrate enough. Like, I didn't even get a woo-hoo out of you when I was celebrating for you. I don't think people celebrate enough. As humans, one of the six basic needs, you know, we need connection and we need recognition. People want to know when they're doing a good job. Even if some things are not doing great, there is something that somebody's doing well. And it's recognizing that for everybody, everybody. Counsel to staff, staff to counsel, community to counsel, council to community, you know, the whole nine yards. So yeah, make sure you guys celebrate. You guys have, you're doing some really great stuff here. So for implementation, hands down, by far, the number one most important thing is that people are always first. And sometimes we forget that, right? Because we get so innovative with all the tasks and all the things that have to get accomplished and we forget about the people. So this is something that's very passionate about people. And I think also sometimes we forget about, you know, this is that whole people before profit first. You know, it's public sector and private sector. But I always think that if you've got it right with the people, everything else works, right? You'll be profitable, you'll be successful, you'll, everything else will work if you get it right with the people. And it's all people. And when I say all, it's the cranky ones too. It's the super cranky ones too, or the ones you don't like, or the ones you don't get along with, or, or George down the street whose dog poops in your yard every week and you're still trying to get him to use the doggy bag. Whatever it is, it's all people. And we forget that all the time. And I only put this up because it's just that reminder. And a lot of these sessions, you know, are about, you know, awareness. And, you know, people first is about building relationships. And it leads into how we serve each other, you know, and thinking about that. Because sometimes people walk in the door and they may have had the worst morning day. You have no idea what's going on behind the scenes. And you're like, hey, did you do this, 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 or what's going on? Hey, you all right? You look a little flustered this morning, how's it going? Like, you know, it takes six seconds, it matters to certain personalities, we'll learn more about that too. You know, I was a former community development director. So I oversaw planning, building, code, housing, economic, arts. That was my previous life when I worked for a local jurisdiction in the East Bay. And when I first came to that department, they were sort of on the hit list. They had the worst ratings for customer service, they had the most complaints. Our revenues were bad, it was a very dysfunctional department, nobody was getting along, council was not kind to them, they were not kind to them either. It was just a big mess, the department was a disaster. And I was like, oh, good, it's my first day. And the only thing I really focused on was the people. I literally held a training every week. I did like TED Talk Tuesdays. I brought baskets of treats in, it was just one of my things. I would walk around and talk to them every single day. I did a ton of team building and I had no budget for it, we did it ourselves. And within less than a year, we had the best ratings from the community. The entire community, 175,000 people. We went from by far the last to the very top, just like that. Internally, everybody wanted to work with us, people wanted to work in our department. We were doing trainings outside of that, all because I wanted them to become master communicators. And it was all about communicating with each other. So people first matters more than anything else, recognizing it. We did recognitions once a month, five minutes. I had a meeting with 100 people, five minutes once a month. All right, come in, who did what? And everybody would just share out a quick little, hey, thank you. It changed them, even the cranky ones. You know, it took a year for some of my staff sometimes to say, I actually enjoy coming to those meetings, but I got them there, it totally took a year. So I share that. One of my favorite, my team has created a very innovative solution, but we're still looking for problems to go with it. So, you know, I'm always the, you know, celebrate the try, you know, celebrate trying to do something, allow people to try to do things, you know, learn and grow, do it again, you know, let's just get out of our own way, you know, and just not maybe analysis paralysis can be, you know, overwhelming. So I have what I consider my magic recipe, you know, my five a day tool for success on any kind of implementation. And that is, it's five questions. And I actually have a handout I'm going to give you guys if you want to keep these questions with you. So this is my secret to success that I'm sharing, whether it's yours or not, I don't know. Am I putting people first? I often ask that question throughout the day. Or when I'm so busy, I'm not paying attention to anything. It's like, am I putting people first? Did I do that today? I need to understand that. I set my intention every single day. Yes, I'm a yogi, so that is kind of my world. But all the greats will tell you this, whether you're listening to Mel Robbins, Tony Robbins, Steve Jobs, everybody will tell you, they set their intention. It doesn't have to be a big intention every day, or you have to meditate for 20 minutes. But you know what? My intention today is to be more innovative. So that maybe I'll just kind of focus on that today. Or maybe today I'll just be a little nicer, or whatever it is, you know, figure out what your intention is today, take a second to do that. It makes all the difference because you will throughout the day find evidence and do things more motivated to that intention. There's evidence behind it. I have a master's in it, I promise you, it's real. Plus I'm a yogi, so that counts too. What matters most? I, you know, in one word, that's, you know, often what helps me answer that question. In one word, what matters most to me today? Since I'm an innovator, I always think this is something fun. How can I inspire and support others today? So I do a lot of things around, you know, how to inspire people. We used to, or you know what, let me finish these, I'll get to that. So utilization, am I in alignment with our service philosophy? Currently, this organization doesn't have an actual service philosophy. Guess what?
Do it.
Yes, yes, thank you, we're going to do one today. It also needs to align with your vision and your mission and your core values. You know, am I in alignment with those things? And sometimes we look at these questions, am I in alignment? Sure I am. Most of the time you're not. You know, take a step back and look at it, you know, really assess if you are or aren't. Am I being the kind of person that I want to be? There are days where I went back, wow, I probably wasn't. You know, and I sort of had to go and apologize to a few people. In fact, that happened yesterday on the phone for like 10 hours. So that happens too. Protection, have I reviewed the fail facts checklist? We're going to get to the fail facts later, they're going to be on the cards that I hand out. We talked about it last time, last year when I was here about the typical sort of top 10 to 15 fail facts, why implementation fails, we're going to talk again about those today. So I always look at that list. And there's always something there I can find that I said, okay, well, this is why I failed at implementation today. Like, this is it, right here, it's on the list, it told me why I wasn't successful. And I'm going to give those to you. And then the last thing is reflection. I mentioned it a moment ago, you know, what am I happy with? What am I not? What could I have done differently? We don't ask that every day. I mean, when was the last time, show of hands, when was the last time you actually asked yourself, am I happy with what I did today? Did I do a good job today? What does that look like? Oh, okay, two. Good, that's awesome. And that's important, right? So good, I love that. So I'm going to share, let's see, oh, there's a little quote. I like this quote, government is served, any purpose is to do for others what they cannot do for themselves, right? We're here because, you know, what we're supposed to do is do all those things that people can't do for themselves, whether it's finding housing or, you know, all the different things that we do for them. And so with that, you are the first to get these cards. They're magic cards, just so you know, if you plant them, they will grow. And so I will have you pass those out. And I have a couple of extra for you to give to staff later. But I have this on my computer in a different version, because now the CD and disc, now I have a better version. But if you like it, that's cool. They're fun to take away, fail facts are on the back. And I promise we will go through the fail facts again. Fun cards, fun card? No, you're good, you're like technology, but I have a lot of them. All right. Kind of fun, huh? We did these in-house, I did a good job. Well, now I'll give you 30 seconds because I did a good toy then, right? So I will go over fail facts, so no worries, so you'll have that. But yeah, so that's a little card. I keep my, in my group computer, do what you want with it, share it with a staff member, you know, all that good stuff. So here's a question I have for all of you, feel free to jump in. What do you think you need most to have a successful implementation? I guess you can reply on. What do you think we need most? I will call on you if somebody doesn't answer. What do you think you need most?
I'd go clear goals.
Clear goals.
A plan.
A plan.
A roadmap.
Roadmap. What do you think you need most? Anybody over here?
Money.
Money? See? Time?
A passion to make a habit.
Passion. Yes, you're staying for innovation training, right? Good. Anything else? All good answers, all right answers, because those are all the things that you need, right? For me, it's about communication, that would be my number one. It goes back to communication. But I agree with all of those, all of those are absolute needs going forward. So I promise to talk about fail facts, understanding what not to do. What are, these are the, this is all about the roadblocks, right? We're always going to hit roadblocks. Actually, let me ask you first before I jump into, although some of you read some of them at the back of the thing, so you can't cheat and do that. But what do you think the number one reason why we fail at implementation? Why do, what is the biggest fail fact that we have?
Poor communication.
Any else? Communication?
I cheated.
She cheated?
No buy-in.
Money. Okay.
Well, adding things to the workload and not balancing that out for staff.
Adding to the workload. Awesome. All good answers. So one of them, these are not in order of how they're prioritized, right? This is from a collaborative, there's a lot of, Harvard Business Review does a really good job in sort of figuring out these. There's also the Mackenzie Study, there's Gallup, there's a lot of different reports that I sort of filtered through and put all, when I put all this stuff together. And so minimal investment and buying alignment with a plan is one of them. No clear consistent communication. It's put from leadership because, but leadership is, you know, a loose term because leadership, there's council leadership, there's staff leadership, right? There's a variety of different leaderships to look at here. So it's communication with leadership. Added work assigned without anything being taken away, ding ding ding, thank Caroline, right? That's right. Very common fail fact. A lack of accountability, right? We're going to talk a little bit about accountability later, I do have some tips on that as well. Not holding people accountable. And that doesn't mean that like, oh, it's in your performance evaluation, you didn't do X, Y, Z. There's a lot of great tools and different ways that we can hold people accountable to different things. So a shortage of patience. I heard a few chuckles on that one. A lack of clarity among staff regarding the strategy, right? That goes back to communication, but a lot of times it's just like, I have done a, understand all of this. Like, it's a lot, right? It's a heavy lift to understand what the strategic plan is, what it looks like. This is actually the number one. Everything's a priority syndrome. And I will say, and maybe I'll turn this way so council doesn't throw anything at me, it typically comes from council. And that's because you have community pressures, right? It's because the whole community is saying, but this is the priority right now, and this is what we need. And it's very hard to sift through all of that noise and all of those important facts and say, yeah, this is all good, we have a strategic plan, we have a budget, we've got it, you know, unfortunately, this is kind of a big life and safety thing, we have to move forward. You know, so it's thinking about that story that you tell them when you're busy, you know, when you're moving forward with these kinds of things. But that is the number one, biggest challenge, that everything is a priority, hands down, by a very far percentage, just so you know. So the next time you want to deviate, perpetual fail facts, right? It's just something, something to be aware of. So this is all just good awareness stuff, right? No true allocation of resources, including time and the people, having the right people assigned to the right tasks. We don't always have good allocation of resources, it's always a challenge. Perceived fairness, recognition and rewards, that ranked very high as well. Fairness often comes up when some people have the opportunity for special assignments or they get to work on teams or do other things that maybe other people didn't get to. Here, small organization who all wear 19 hats as it is, so you get a lot of diversity automatically. But, but there is some, some recognition about that as well. An absence of innovation fostered by leadership. This will be an interesting topic when we get to innovation because everybody talks about innovation, it's on websites, it's everywhere. And yet, when I have a conversation about innovation, people like, don't even know what it is, they've never engaged it, they've never done it, it's just sort of like, well, yeah, like, you know, we had this one idea, so we're innovative. We'll talk about that. So neglect to utilize the right approach and execution. Sometimes, you know, maybe, you know, the end result was close to what we wanted, but we just didn't approach it the right way. So sometimes there's just different ways to look at things. Recognition of failures or successes, I'm a big fan of this one. You have to try things, there's a lot of things, especially in government, we just don't know, we've never done it. Like, we just have to kind of go on trip and be and go, at least we tried, you know, we got somewhere with it, you know, we're going to keep trying. Limited understanding of the real problem, distraction with others' concerns. Other people, there's a lot of noisy people out there. And while it's important for us to hear them, listen to them, take that all in, we can get distracted by that. And so it's just sort of understanding like, well, what is the real problem here? You know, are your feelings hurt or are we upset? Or, you know, what is the problem? Is we need to fix the pothole or is it the fact that you're upset that the dog fell in the pothole and yet, whatever? So like, you know, what is the real problem? So it's sort of talking through some of those things. An inaccurate perception of actual organizational capabilities. This one didn't rank super high, but it is good awareness around it because, you know, often we think, especially when organizations are smaller, we think, wow, they do so much more with less and they can do all these things and they're checking boxes. And, you know, at some point they reach capacity or beyond capacity. So it's sort of also having awareness to recognize, you know, what are they really capable of? Are we putting too much on? So it's just, you know, balancing all those things. Understanding the cultural landscape is one as well. And understanding of who is in charge. And so with that, what I'd like you all to do is to write down what you think your number one and number two fail fact is. Where do you think you fall? Like, what's the one that kind of gets you? Because there's at least one up there, right? I got at least three that I know. Patience might be one of them. And you can write the number if you want to write the whole thing out.
Under you 100%.
Sorry. You'll be done by the time I get it on her. Everybody done? Okay. Well, I forgot a new spider. Who would like to share? Maybe I'll share first, right? Patience. I have a unique pace of my own. And apparently, not everybody has my same pace. This is why I do not drink coffee, because I'm enough without it. So that is definitely one of my things that I have to sort of recognize. And recognition, I've gotten much better with, I'm almost overloaded with recognition. And then allocation of resources. Sometimes I'm more like, well, we'll just figure it out as we go. And we'll try some things on, you know, sort of low budget and, you know, shoestrings. So I think those are probably some of mine, you know, just, you know, making sure. And occasionally, buy-in, because, you know, when you have big departments or a lot of staff, it's like, it's hard to get buy-in from everybody, right? Community, council, staff, there's, there's a lot of people, so getting that buy-in sometimes is tough. So those are mine. So with that, I'd like to hear from y'all, what maybe you think you're guarding. And I will call on you.
I'll go first.
Okay.
I went with number three, added work assignment to staff without any work taken away. Sometimes like in my job now, there's a normal, normal day that they're filled with and then I'll throw more on top without considering that. So number six, what was that? Lack of clarity among staff regarding the str- str- strategy. Sometimes the way I explain things don't always come across the way I think they should. So that's my lack of there. I did number eight, no true allocation of resources. The time thing is, is big for me. And then number 11 would be another bonus one, the right approach and execution. It kind of ties back into my, sometimes I don't explain things the best.
And that's communication, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, good. Thanks for sharing forward, that's awesome. Okay.
Well, I'll just go.
Thank you. I know.
A lack of accountability. So I work very hard to be accountable to everything I do and what I say and so on and so forth. So when people don't have that, it irritates me. So that's my definite number one. And then number two is the no clear consistent communication. And because I think everything else can sort of umbrella into those things. So that's part of why I just went with those two.
Okay. What, 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 first with you, Jennifer, what's your?
So coincidentally, the two that she picked are the two that I picked.
Okay.
But, but I, I touched on all of them. I mean, I, I, this was a good task for me, this was a good effort because I can relate to so many, whether it's at this role, my personal role, my, my day job or elsewhere. So patience is also on there as well, that, that everything is a priority syndrome. I'm guilty of that myself in my, my, my other life to prioritize everything and try to get everything done and not break it down. But I'm big on accountability. And then communication as far as consistent communication, those are my two.
I almost got, I thought it was going to be funny if I put everything is a priority syndrome and gave T-shirts out to the council, the last group I was at. And then I decided maybe after the training I would do that, so, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Caroline.
For number one was a shortage of patience. Just for me, it's, I can tend to like get tip over the tipping point and I have to remind myself to check myself.
Okay.
And then the number two was added work assigned to staff without any work taken away. In my day job, I'm staff and I report to a board, so I can see, I'm, I'm on both sides of that. And so it's interesting when the board assigns me staff, that then nothing else is taken away and it's big stuff. And so then I tend to also not think about that when we're adding new things from the council's perspective. And the one thing I wrote down, and I don't know where it falls in here, but it's meeting people where they are. And that's something that I, I worked on a long time, for like 10 years, is meeting people where they are, just in life or, you know, mental health, like whatever it is, like you, you tend to not meet people where they are, then, then it tends to fall apart, like things aren't good. Communication's bad, everything's bad, no empathy, like things like that. So that's, I just kind of wrote that down as my own.
I have a 24-year-old sometimes and I have to step back and go, okay, now he's not where I think he should be I have a 24 year old sometimes and I have to step back and go, okay, now he's not where I think he should be or where I think he is, right? I have to like think about his mindset because, you know, what did I think about when I was 24, right? Anybody else? Anybody else want to share? Did you want to hear from some staff? Any staff?
I'll, I'll go. I think for me, everything is a priority. And I think some of that pressure comes from council to me because they'll call me and they're getting calls from their constituency. So, uh, and then I end up trickling down to department heads. So I'm sure they will all feel that everything is a priority, which then goes into added work assignments to staff without work taken away. Because we are small. We don't have administrative department heads. I'm not an administrative city administrator. We're all working managers. So whether the police chief is doing patrol, the public works superintendent is actually running a water treatment plant. You know, fire chief might actually be on a call. The, you know, it doesn't matter. Whichever one it is, we have our day-to-day stuff that we're doing as well. And then I have a shortage of patience similar to you. I work really fast. So I've already gone through the 12 scenarios. So I have to remember, you know, if I'm talking to someone, they're still on scenario number three in their head, I'm already on 16. So, and I've already, I've already proven why all of the other ones don't work. So I have to remember, I'm, I'm not on the same.
Case, yes, yeah. And well, we're gonna talk about colors and styles. And so it'll be kind of an interesting awareness. So one other staff member, anybody else want to share? Maybe at least one of theirs thought. I saw heads nodding, so.
They're like, yeah, she does.
I agree with everything she said.
Anything different? Does anybody have anything different than what everybody else had shared that was maybe interesting?
I have a lack of accountability. When I see that, it's kind of when our department work delegated something to someone else that to hold somebody accountable and then I'll come back and that hasn't been done. And even that fosters into another situation where people see that. And I also have, I recognize the failures that have success. Because sometimes you can't get to that point without trying something else. And you might get something really good out of that, it didn't really work, but that's gonna help you be more successful and recognize that's the positive.
Good, thank you. Good shouts. Anybody else? Don't worry, there'll be more opportunity to share more later. Thank you, all good stuff. I appreciate you guys participating in that. So we did talk about accountability. I already did talk about, you know, the, the report that was just sort of very specific. And, you know, technology, smart sheets. I think motivation is a big one. You know, when we're overworked and overwhelmed and stressed and those kinds of things, you know, it's hard to stay motivated. It's hard to stay excited about things. And, you know, we have to find ways to kind of maybe bring some of that inspiration back with fun workshops or trainings. You know, I won't talk about all these. There's executive memos. There's a lot of different ways that we can have accountability. And I'm gonna go to the next page and I'll talk about performance metrics indicators. But, you know, I think agendas, whether they're agendas like with your team, your department, organization, council, agendas are such an underutilized tool from my perspective. I spent almost a whole day in a Stanford workshop on agendas and I thought, I really have to go to this. They're really paying, like, this is a class I'm gonna take, agendas. I actually found it fascinating. I have probably 20 takeaways that I took away from the agendas. But it's such an underutilized tool for accountability. We actually had, we developed a very interesting agendas, but they're very intense. And the bottom part of the agenda has who's assigned what task. So for the next time, it literally is lined out, who's assigned what task. We have, who's the DA? Who's the devil's advocate in, in the session? So somebody has to play devil's advocate. And we always change roles. So someone who's gonna fight it, like, I don't think that's a good idea. Well, why? Well, and then they'll give me 10 reasons why it's not. So somebody is gonna push against everything we're thinking so we don't get stuck into that group think process. You know, we have different people striped, so, and I have the worst handwriting, but I still have to do it. You know, we sort of rotate positions. We have some of our core questions on there. Were we innovative today? How, where, why, when? What are we celebrating today? We made sure we celebrated. So an agenda can be something that in all levels, in any organization, in any way, where you can have a lot of these elements incorporated into it. So it's part of daily life. So that there's a way to be more accountable, inspiring, all those things. So if there's a takeaway, I would say, you know, use, use your agendas in a more wisely thoughtful, unique way. Because you're the ones putting them together, right? Like, hey, how can we make these better? Make them more different, more interesting? So it's a couple of things on that. So performance indicators. You know, when we talk about accountability, we always talk, go back to, right? Our performance evaluations and, you know, what that looks like. We have sort of the standard, you know, make sure that the things are on time. Did you finish the task? Do we get any complaints on it? Did you fall within budget, right? We all those sort of standard things that we all hear about, right? That's nice. But I think there's a lot of other ways that we can be more thoughtful to our performance indicators. For example, if innovation is one of your core values, are we holding people to be accountable in innovation? Like, is that on the list? Is it talked about? Is it one of the line items? Is it in a performance evaluation? So, you know, if that's gonna be a core value, then you need to have an indicator along with it, right? Were you innovative? How often were you innovative? These are things that are more true to my heart. These are things I'm seeing more as industry standards. You know, are you aligning your performance indicators to your, all of your core values? To your service philosophies? You know, maybe it's employee turnover. If you're having employee turnover issues, you know, what does that look like? How did we reduce those? You know, maybe your energy, your organization's about having good positive energy. Are you measuring against that? Maybe you're trying to have staff grow and you want them to have more influence and to be able to present better, you know? So there's a lot of different ways to measure. So I would ask the question that as you move forward and you're gonna look at performance and what you expect from people, that if you're going to be clear in your communication, then you need to be very specific. And you need to find out what matters most to you all, right? Like, I can say it should be with your service philosophy, it should be with your core values. It should align with your mission. You say innovation's important. I think kindness hardcore, hands down, no matter what, it's gotta be kindness. I don't think people are kind enough, hands down. I can tell you they're just not. Don't know why. I don't know if it's a post-COVID thing. I find people are sometimes crankier. But I'm gonna do my best to make it so that maybe they're a little kinder too. I had a staff member, he was a electrical building inspector. I worked with him for over 10 years. He's actually my neighbor, it turns out. And people had this nickname for him that he was very cranky and whatnot. And, you know, he came up to me one time and he said, you know, he said, you said something once to me a couple of weeks ago. Because he said, well, I was being nice. And I said, well, then be nicer. And he said, but it stuck with me. And he goes, and I went home and he said, my wife and my daughter said, yeah, you could be a lot nicer, Dad. And I said, and he said, but I realized, he goes, I thought about it every day. And I'm like, I'm not that nice. He goes, I'm hard on people and I can come off abrupt. And he goes, and I can be nicer. And he goes, and I wouldn't be nicer. And it was like, and granted, this is after many years, but I was like, right on. Like, he got it, like, you know? And so they kind of, people started shifting around that because he was a little tough to work with. It was the reason he didn't get a couple of promotions too. Now, was he wicked smart? Did he get all the job done? Did he fill up all, fill out all, fill out all the other boxes? Yeah. His style was a little unique and that's in one way too. He just wasn't that nice. So just be nicer. Like, that's a great question to ask ourselves, right? Anyway, one of mine, I'll go off on a tangent with it. You know, we all set our own standard, you know, whatever we think that is. We have to decide what that is, how we work, you know, why we do what we do. That's important. So that's session one. Thank you. I hope that was helpful. And I am here for questions and we get a three minute break.
She's.
Say on the last slide, performance metrics. Since, you know, part of the conversation about accountability and transparency.
Do you guys want a water? So I got some, okay, there's waters, there's drinks in there.
Idea of what that is. So identifying what that.
I miss the beginning. What they do in. Just interact with each other.
That in any, I felt transparency. But it's, it is something you wanna document.
Of course they don't.
If you're gonna define out on indicators, you'll talk about.
Well, some are literally used days, hours, whatever you want to call it. We're full month, which is nice to know. The once they're notified every month that you're gonna get. We can immediately start drawing on those funds. For doing contracts to be signed, which I find is very. Calhoun's. So that's. Pretty exciting because we are already, we've already spent almost $1,000 getting the land prepped to start.
And what is this gonna do for the?
We're adding a, the compensation to the, because of the. So fortunately. Source. I know that, you know, they're very. Well, we got that covered. Because that was an obvious question.
Is your pocket the person of another color or as you know your color?
Yeah, she's in that. She's unfortunate she had, she was supposed to be here today. She had three vaccinations yesterday afternoon. The newest COVID.
I'm great. I volunteer at Habitat. It's been a long time, but I worked on two housing projects, one in Hayward and one in Castro Valley.
Oh, exciting.
Yeah, it was so cool. Such a great organization.
We're building 107 homes. And you just can't.
Thank you.
So we're on the cusp of getting a $10 million grant to start.
Awesome.
Just to do the roads and the.
Infrastructure.
Sure. Then we have to find homeowners, but we will.
You will. Oh, you're kidding? I was gonna say, I'm sure there's a waitlist, yes. That's awesome. Well, thank you for serving this.
Coincidentally, we want a great resource to do a strategic. We're in the process of starting.
This is phase two. So we already did the phase one. So we came up with the core values, my council priorities, all of that. Then we line item all of the items, put them in years, put budget to them. So like all that happened last session.
Okay.
So this is more like just sort of following up, doing some implementation. And then all the stuff that's come out of the surveys are, here's all the trainings and things we need to do. And so this is what we're training on. So, yeah, so this is phase two, you're saying. Because you missed all the.
I know, I know. All the fun stuff. Anyway. So that is the real, that is the point.
Because that's general. Because those are.
Strategic plan.
And so they're interpretive, right?
Session for us and all the session just like this. But it's. Wouldn't know that when. Um, you know, I was just looking at if I had his company's name, I know his name is George. It was with G R Stone. Seems to be really. Part of it is each one of our board members have been assigned a certain number of papers saying, could you stakeholder interviews? So I have a lot of questions I have to ask the group. Like, what do you know about Habitat or what do you want us to learn? Just for our board members that ask. So like this is. I guess. Mayors who give us a significant. Who's driving my wife's car? That was really strong. Remember that was a lot of talks.
Oh, and that's a place for some physical therapy.
I think it was.
Did you guys get to.
You really. Before we get signed, the complete.
So it's looking all.
So it's all looking positive.
It's big. It's gonna complete all your underground? And then you're ready to.
So I'm. So if I jump up all of a sudden, it's because I love you.
I gave him this one time. In my mind, I thought you got it, but it must have been like a free.
It was supposed to be in gym. And here we are. They keep telling us next week, next week.
Well, yeah, not real recreation. They said Frida's, you're getting it, but I just.
Yeah, once, and who, once you get no attention. The contract.
As long as you know it's cunning, as long as you know for sure.
They did say we could start drawing money after we've been notifying the board. Because before we have signed. Which I thought, no, they're weird. Oh, no, they told us.
Is this on the second?
This, no, this is on the book. That's a. So we'll. Might yell all of a sudden if I get an email.
Okay, we're going. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So section two. Topic, topic of interest is innovation. So I, um, hold on one second. So let's go ahead. There you go. Okay. All right, so by show of hands, how many of you think? Am I, no, no, okay. How many of you think government is innovative? So what I will tell you, 99% of the time when I go places, it's either no hands or a couple. It will be my life's mission to change that. We'll see how that goes. Clearly, I landed 117, so.
I've been trying for 17.
Yeah, yeah, I've got 32 years, so we'll see. Okay, so show of hands, if you think innovation is important in government. Show of hands if you believe yourself to be an innovative person. Okay. So what I'd like you to do is paper and pen. I have a little task. I want you to write down what you believe, what you believe innovation actually means.
You can't do that to me. Because I wrote down on the first page, what do you mean by innovation?
Mine's.
Okay, what was it again?
What do you believe innovation to mean? Could this be when you built the song, right?
Right.
Save for the song.
This is exactly the one we were using. Is it plugged in? It's not showing. Oh, you're bad.
Sorry.
I'm just saying. Well, now I have the innovative. I actually give them.
Hers is, it's actually.
What did you say in the icon? It mustn't show you on your computer. I just don't want you to lose power.
Okay, we've got some definitions. All right, so.
Oh, that's yours.
Okay. I'm like, somebody's gonna lose power.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
There's a little battery.
All right. There you go.
There it is.
Yay. All right, so. Shareouts. I want to hear what you all believe innovation means. We'll start over here with staff, this lovely table over here.
I just wrote one more down, success.
Success, okay.
I didn't say we were creativity.
Creativity, good, okay.
Since finding alternative ways to complete tasks.
Good.
I think in government, we always wanna not reinvent the wheel. So people are more likely to just, we want, don't reinvent the wheel to this future. But I think innovation is thinking outside of the box completely in a way that can improve service and potentially save money by a different, a whole different program, whatever that may be.
Good definition, good. Someone else? Let me know these definitions.
Okay. Uh, I put innovation is working through failure. Innovation is solving employee issues, new revenue sources and trying new things, products and technology.
Nice.
I put ways of efficiently and effectively completing any task or duty and using technology to get there.
Interesting how we're all defining this, right? Because it starts with how do we really understand what it is, right? What else we got?
I have creative solutions or different approaches to issues, giving everyone opportunity to create themselves and taking risks.
Oh, it's my favorite word, risk. We're gonna talk about risk. We're gonna embrace risk. All right, go.
I wrote creativity and thinking outside of the box.
Okay, nice. All right.
So mine
Go ahead.
It's taking risks to solve problems, address issues, um, that embrace new ways of doing things. But it's, it's, it's risks.
Risks. Awesome. Awesome. Good stuff. Anybody in the audience want to share anything? Could you write one?
Uh, getting things done by methods other than Always.
I copy science, always. Yeah, yeah, good. Awesome. Okay, um, one more, Simon. So now what I'd like you to do is this is the touchy feely. I want you to write a letter to innovation. Dear innovation, I feel, I think, I want, I hate, I love, I don't, whatever. I want you to write a letter to innovation. How do you feel about it? What does it make you think? Does it make you anxious? Do you love it? Do you fear it? Do you hate it? Do you want it? I don't know. How do you feel about it? Please share. Or please write. My son made the playlist, so I apologize if it's eclectic.
We never turn down.
Right? I know.
Sure.
Feels good.
Battery 100.
Now we got Phil. Very high.
About 10 more seconds.
What?
Easy brings up
Oh, Bernie brings up the name of her.
All right, we've got some letters. So you do know what my next question is.
Read it.
Yes, I want shareouts. Um, yes, I want shareouts. So we'll go maybe in a different place. So Jennifer, you start.
I, I can't put emotion onto it. I'm sorry. I just couldn't. I, I wrote, I feel, and I suffered. So I failed with this, I'm sorry.
That in itself is an interesting thing to be aware of.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to chew innovation's ass in a way, and I didn't think it was appropriate.
That's
I don't know. I said, I feel that you are ever changing, and then I was gonna go all bad on it. So I thought, you know, I'm gonna leave emotion out of it, and I'll let somebody else do this.
But that says something in itself, because that is important. That's what I'm trying to get at. So thank you for that.
That changed my color, didn't it?
Uh huh, Caroline.
Dear innovation. I have a love-hate relationship with you. I am open to taking moderate to low risk to find a new solution or create a way to reach a goal, but I struggle with diving in the deep end of the pool to take a bigger risk. Heart Caroline.
Awesome. Good.
I love it.
That was good.
I just wrote two sentences. Dear innovation, you make me uncomfortable because you take me places outside my comfort zone. But without fail, you make me proud and grow with the places we go.
Nice. Also very nice. Yes, they're good.
Uh, dear innovation, thank you for pushing me to expand my way of thinking and always showing me we can always improve.
Nice, good.
I put, dear innovation, you are scary, dot, dot, dot. But wanted and needed to be productive and accomplish the goals you need to be successful.
Awesome, awesome. Good stuff. All right, over here. Somebody wrote a letter.
I didn't write a letter, but I, I just looked at question. I, my brain went to the successes as a result of innovation. When you think about like Apple, when you think about Amazon, and without their innovation, they wouldn't have been, become the companies that they became. And I think when you think of innovation, you don't think of failures, failed innovation nearly as often, or I can't even think of, when you correlate success and innovation, it's, there's not failure in innovation. Uh, innovation relates to positive things that happen, ending in positive results.
So you have a good perspective.
That's I didn't go deer, I couldn't, my brain didn't.
Nice letter, verbal letter. Well, you know, thanks innovation, you know, our lifespans have doubled, right? I mean, there's a lot to be said for innovation. So, um, so, all right, any other shareouts?
Dear innovation, I will try to use you when possible, choose not to use you when not practical.
Ooh, that's not Nice success. That was good.
We could substitute innovation.
Dear John.
We're near the audience. Go ahead. Have a time for you, man.
All right, dear innovation, I so want to be, I so want to know you better. How can I make you more a part of my organization's life and my personal life? Please be gentle with me and show me respect when I fall behind. And help me to introduce you to others, more, to make them more comfortable with you.
Wow, good. We might post that one. Good.
No, that's good.
Yeah, anyone else? They're all right answers. They're all good. Do you want to do one? Go ahead.
I, I didn't get my sentence structure in, but it pings off the way the chief said here. Uh, dear innovation, as an accomplished daydreamer, how can I bear to approve practical application, uh, in getting to the finish line?
Nice, nice, good. So, um, within those stories that you have written, I would like you to circle, so pretend you wrote something. Uh, I would like you, and you too, I would like you to write the two most powerful words that are in that story. So whatever you wrote, what do you think are the two words that are the most powerful that stand out to you the most, or the most sticky? Okay, who wants to share? We're a big sharing group now, you know, you know. AKA the share group. All right, come on, show. Go ahead.
Uh, I did, it's scary and needed.
Scary and needed? What else we got?
Uncomfortable throw. Impactful intimidating.
Struggle and risk.
Expand and improve.
Success and failure.
Ooh.
Possible and practical.
Well, I started with, I love you. That's pretty powerful. And it's assisted with my professional accomplishments, one of the best I've had in my career.
So what's a good word for it? Your ban, okay.
Mine's just nervous, because I only have one sentence. I'm nervous. Okay.
Even though I think about you all the time.
Sure you done the same assignment. Sorry, if I have a
Anyone else?
Practical application and grooming.
Okay. Anybody else? Good, we're good. Okay, all right, um, so good stuff. Remember these, because this is your story. This is your story around innovation. This is the story you know, this is your belief. This is what you tell people. This is how people learn from you from it. You're modeling this, you're behaving this. This is your story around innovation. So as you move forward in the world of innovation, um, be thinking about that, because this is what you exude. So Stories can be changed, they can be modified, um, softened or not, but, um, just awareness around it. Um, innovation boils down to number one thing, thank you for that, chief, is, um, it's about three magic ingredients. Um, feeling. Right? It's all about how we feel about innovation, right? The emotion around innovation. Um, uh, if we're fearful, if we're inspired, if we're excited, um, it's also about, you know, what we think. What do we think about innovation? What were we told? What has social media said? What was our experience around it? You know, what is our mindset around it? What do you tell others about it? Um, and then also the energy that you expend on it, you know, what are your actionables? Um, you know, how do you behave with it? So, um, you know, I think of this as it's good for us to know, sorry, two laptops, um, how we feel about it, how we think about it, and what energy we're going to spend or not spend on, right? Because ultimately, how we think and how we feel about it, ultimately results in the actions, you know, um, and what we do with it. So with that, let me
Bless you.
Okay, sure, that was. So there are over, if you go to Google innovation, there's over 300 million definitions and references to the word innovation. Like, that's a big hit, right? That's like a big deal. There's about 18 common definitions of innovation. Uh, the most common, however, I broke it down into kind of five, is to create something brand new. That's what people, most people think of, right? The Big Bang, something brand new, like, oh, that was so innovative and creative. Um, or it's just to change something, make something different, um, to alter something typically just for the improvement of it. Uh, a process that involves activities that lead to the change or the creation, right? It's the, the, the starting point. Um, and then successful implementation that adds value to a person or to something, right? Because we don't want to add value. So those are kind of the most common definitions of innovation. Um, there's also, I categorize this in four different ways. So there's, the ways to think about innovation is there's the incremental, right? Um, where there is, for some will love this, because this is where government typically lives. High certainty, low risk, right? Let's make a plan. Let's talk about it for a year. Let's take 16 steps. Did we do the research, right? Like, let's just be as low risk as possible. The attorneys love this, right? They're like, yes, this is exactly where we should live. Um, so gradual, continual, also good and important, right? I mean, there's a balance to that. Some of those things have to be that way. There is importance to that, too. So I'm not waiting one more than the other, but there's just importance in recognizing that. Um, uh, there's architectural, where there's significant improvement. Usually it's something that already exists, but you're significantly improving it, uh, which might be like an efficiency to something. Um, the third one is the disruption one. This is what you often hear about, especially in the technology world, right? Um, that there's disruption, uh, there's turbulence. This is where people get sticky and people typically rebel. Right? This is when people go, ah, I can't believe you're gonna make me do that. I'm super uncomfortable. I don't want to do that. I don't like that. I don't understand it. I don't have certainty. I think it's too risky. So this is often where a lot of, um, activity occurs, and this is where fears start to bubble up and rise. Um, and then you have your fourth one, which is radical. Significant breakthroughs, mega transformation, um, that's where um, there's high uncertainty. This is where Google lives, but this is also where typically education and training is required. So a radical transformation could be if you're an organization that's never used technology and you come in with a brand new ERP system, it's like, pah. You want to talk about, you know, pain points and, you know, dissatisfaction and growing, all that stuff, like that, exactly. It's, it's like that for months, sometimes years. So, um, you know, radical's tough, and so it's something to think about as you're moving forward in technology or whatever form of innovation you decide to move forward with. That, um, you know, are we falling in one of these? Because I know that if this is gonna be disruptive, I'm gonna have rebellion, so maybe we spend more time talking about it. You know, maybe we have to have a different approach on how we deal with this. Because sometimes we get, oh, we're getting this new technology, and the staff's going, what? What do you mean you bought new tech? When does that hit? What, what, what? And, you know, maybe there needs to be more people on the team. Maybe there needs to be better leadups. So it's just sort of thinking about that, um, you know, and sort of what level, you know, you're coming in on, um, and what that looks like. So Steve Jobs defines innovation as the commitment to continuous improvement, the commitment to doing. Um, he has all about do. I just read two of his books on innovation. It was quite interesting. So, um, so why we innovate? As humans, it's in our DNA. Uh, we want to grow, we want to learn. Um, we want to evolve, we need to evolve, we have curiosity, right? It's just naturally, we're curious. Um, I highlighted exciting and that there's a value add, because more and more, as I've done this presentation countless times, hundreds maybe, um, people have used the term, this is really exciting. And I find that interesting, because when I'm talking with about, um, employee retention, um, and recruitment, people want to be excited. They want to be with organizations innovative, especially the younger generations. They're like, are you being innovative? Well, how? Oh, yeah, we're innovative. We publicize it, we talk, you know, and then if you go there, like, really? We haven't talked about it. It's not on my performance. What have we done? Like, you're not innovative at all. Like, they're, they're disappointed. And so it comes up a lot, the generationally more so, but, um, they really want excitement. If you're gonna be innovative, you need to live by that creed. So I am one of those people that if we're gonna walk the walk, or talk the talk, walk the walk. So if we're gonna say we're an innovative organization, or I'm an innovative person, then be that, right? So thoughtfulness around that. Um, it is a good retention and recruitment tool, by the way. So innovation up there is great, um, and it's considered to be very exciting. So you can use that tool as part of, you know, recruitment. Like, no, actually, we've gone through innovation training, we're doing this, we're doing that. We actually are innovative. That is inspiring to people. Um, there are statistics that we'll see later, too, that show that people, although salaries come first, hardcore, second and third, innovation, excitement, passion, those kinds of things, right there with the numbers. So sometimes what we can make up in money, we can make up in other things. Um, and that is a true statement. We were actually a very innovative department. We ran 17 different innovation teams. Granted, it was a bigger agency. But what I will tell you is that a lot of my staff often offers to go to other jurisdictions for more money, and they're like, are you kidding? We're innovative, we're creative, we're fun, we're like a family, and we do cool stuff, but like, I'm not gonna get this anywhere else. Like, you can keep your extra couple hundred bucks a month, man, there's no way. So something to be said for it. So, um, for businesses, why do businesses innovate, right? We, this is a business, right? Um, you're a business in a sense, and rating revenues, rating efficiencies, you get a competitive edge. You are competing with other jurisdictions around you for development, for economic growth, for other things. How you market and brand yourself is important. They talked about retention. Um, uh, attracting investors and partners for things. Employee performance. You also don't have a choice. Like, this is always a hard one to kind of swallow, but like, the world is changing, everything's changing, like, we have to keep up, right? Um, as an organization. So, um, it's something that we have to look at to some degree, um, just to be able to keep up. Um, some interesting statistics, uh, the McKinsey Global Survey. Executives, when they were surveyed, it was hundreds of thousands. Executives believe that they are 80% at risk for disruption. Remember when we talked about disruption, that point of like rebellion, that third tier, um, if you will, of the definitions? Um, 80% at risk of disruption. That's what their belief system is, and they're most likely right. 84% believe that innovation is important and that their career depends on being innovative, and this is publicly, right? That's sector statistics. 82% that were surveyed either do it wrong, or they don't do it at all. Right? One of their fail facts. Um, 71% are implementation challenged. Well, there's a big surprise, right? I mean, that's always a challenge. First thing I always hear is I don't have time to innovate. So something to think about. Um, and then the, uh, the mindset about profit versus people. Um, that when you're more innovative, um, and have people to be inspired and creative, then you're technically more profitable. Um, there are statistics that have shown, if you're looking at, um, from the perspective of being sort of a conscious capitalist approach, that, um, when you put people first, there is an 800% um, higher financial success rate than not. 800% for retention, for generating revenues, when people are first and when they're innovative. So kind of interesting. All right, so more fun stuff. All right. Little task for you guys. On a one to 10, write it down, how innovative are you? On a one to 10, you think? Not that you'd like to be, but how innovative are you?
So 10 is saying you're the most
10 is you are, you're like, AKA Steve Jobs, AKA all kinds of like, yeah, you're that person. One is, I'm gonna hide under a rock and that's just no. One to 10. On a one to 10, how much do you really desire to be more innovative? Weighing how you feel about it, weighing the importance of it, what do you, on a one to 10, what do you really desire? One to 10. And most importantly, on a one to 10, is fear a factor? Yes or no? And if so, on a one to 10, what's your fear factor number to innovation? If I had more time, we'd spend a lot more time on the fear element of it, but. You know, it's interesting. Even with all the fear that's wrapped around, you know, you think about the times of like the biggest stressors, like, you know, the COVIDs, pandemics, disasters. Significant creativity often comes, the biggest challenges, the biggest disasters. You always are mindful of that or think of that going into it, but that often is the case. So, um, show of hands, anybody who is a seven or higher on how innovative you think you are? Okay. Show of hands if you're under five. Five and unders. Five and unders. Okay. On a scale one to ten, desire to be more innovative, seven or higher. Okay, passion's there. Five and under? Well, the honesty. You know, it's hard to be honest and honorable. Josh, you ready? Oh, it went under. Well, it didn't bounce very well. Over there. All right. You get the first Josh today. Fear factor. One to ten, fear factor. What's your number? So everybody show their number. What's that here? Six?
So I didn't give a number. In my personal, there's no absolute reason for that. It's because where I work, our budgets are pretty limited in terms of spend. But as far as in the city, it's a yes, and that's because you don't want to try something and fail with limited resources, limited financial resources, et cetera, et cetera. So it's kind of like, you really want to be sure what you're doing. So I go, like I said, personally, it's one way.
And all of these questions, when they're asked, it's hard to understand what role you're answering them. Your, your city council, your personal, your professional, your mom, your sister.
And we do shift, right? In our styles and dress, but generally speaking, generally speaking, you are pretty much the same. one way. You're not going to take mega high risk, you know, unless you're maybe a special ops Navy SEAL jumping out of a plane. You know, like, I'm a high risk here and at home, I'm like, oh my God, I'm so afraid. I don't want to make toes or burn it. You're not that different of a person. You really do have a number that's in a range, even if it's slightly different at home. Just like you're not exactly the same in your personality style, head council or at home, but you're pretty close. You're still that person.
So my fear number is a three. I don't, if I'm doing the right thing and doing right by myself, my God, and I put my pillow on my head at night, I don't have any fear.
Uh, I'm a six.
I'm a one.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm a ten.
Anybody else got a number?
Scott, what's your number?
It's tough because I'm looking at it from a couple of different
I know, that's what I'm saying.
angles. And fear, I, you know, I'm not afraid of stuff, but then you start thinking more deeply into it and there's consequences to not being in fear. And whatever innovation that you might have created may result in a complete failure, which could result in the loss of life potentially in my, in my world. Definitely a little bit of fear, but it's like, I'm not brave, but I, but I have to be, you know, to a certain extent. So I don't think I can come up with a number without a specific circumstance.
Dozen, right? You're in the middle. Okay.
So five, five could just be the middle of the road.
And I think I look at that score as like, are you willing to even entertain it? Or are you willing to, um, or are you absolutely not?
Right, like are you willing to continue?
I'm willing to always be open to it. I'm never going to sit there and say, no, we've always done it this way. So we need to continue to do it that way. I'm always going to be open to, we might need to change. Never for the sake of changing. Like, we just have to change for the sake of changing. But if someone's coming to me and saying, this isn't working. It doesn't feel right. We're, we're kind of fumbling through. One hundred percent, I will always look at doing something.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on the, um, you know, the attorneys aren't always our friends for those of us that have like no fear of that stuff. So we, we learned, we learned to work with them. You know, we, we nudge them along. They nudge us back. You know, that's sort of how it usually works and that's okay. You've got to find balance in that. So, um, so who do we need to be in order to be innovative? I believe, um, this is from what I, my teachings, my masters, my worldly thoughts, everything I've read and heard, um, I think we need to be fearless advocates. Whether that's if you can't do it yourself, to advocate for somebody else. Um, and let, you know, I'm, I'm one of those like, you know, don't be a squasher. If someone else has a good idea, you know, and guess what? Everybody squashes somebody at some point when you're just like, I'm sure about that. I want to come by that. And it's okay to question, just squash. Like, they're excited. They're passionate. Like, they're ready to like, oh, you know, I have this idea. And you're like, you know, well, and you know, like, how about, you know what? I'm so excited to hear it. What are you saying? How was your response? Like, hey, I want to hear about that. Maybe not right this second, but you know, just, just think about it. About, because it takes a lot of courage for people to come up and say they have an idea or they want to try something new or they want to experiment or they want to take risk. And it takes a lot of energy and courage just to start that. So if you squash them the first time, it's not like they're going to go back. So if we're going to be innovative, we have to be willing to be non-squashers. That's my technical term for this. We have to do it strategically, kindly, every, every day. You know, when I think about innovations, what we need to be, I, I love, um, I was reading a book recently and it was talking about sort of the top sort of five hundred inventions and different things. And so I was reading all these stories in like the Dyson vacuum. You know, it took them five thousand attempts to make that vacuum over like a decade. So one of my favorites, so Rocky, right? Everyone knows Rocky, right? So that's just alone. You know, that he had to knock on two thousand doors to get that first movie because nobody wanted to cast him. Because they didn't believe he was the right person for the part, over two thousand, and he talks at length about it. But he was like, no, I, I believe in myself. I want to do this. I'm going to keep going. And I mean, franchise, I mean, you know, look where he is today. He didn't give up and it took a lot of courage to do that. So, um, I'm one of those, you know, rise each other up. You know, it's not always easy to do, especially if you have differences of opinion, styles, personality, things. But rise each, each other up because in the end, it's all about making a better organization to serve a community. So, uh, that's my two cents on that. Experimentor, we talked a lot about this already, but you know, we do have to test the waters. Which means if you get it right perfectly the first time out of the gate, I don't know. Like, was that success? Because you learn more from the failures. And was that the best? So sometimes you need to play around with it for a while. Practice makes, you know, maybe almost perfect. Brace the failure. We talked about that. Supporting others. I'm a big thing about advocate. Open-mindedness. It's sort of like that kindness when I was talking about earlier about being open-minded, like, how open-minded are we? If I am a, you know, whether I'm a one or a ten and I fear it and it's risky, am I really being as open-minded as I can? I, I don't know. You know what I mean? So you kind of sometimes have to ask that question of yourself to make sure that, okay, well, am I being open-minded? Because I know it terrifies me, so I don't want to talk about it. So how's my body language? Am I actually being open about it? It's super fun. It's exciting to do. It inspires people. So, you know, just keeping that on the table. You know, this is an option culturally. So what Google and Amazon and some of the other, you know, big dogs do, they call it white space. You probably heard about it. It's been around a long time. There's a lot of different ways. They grant staff, um, they actually grant staff twenty percent of their full, all of their time to white space time, to be only innovative. Now, that's of course big. I'm not saying that. But an organization right now, we're actually going innovation, we're on tier seven. And so we just finished six. And so they actually have thirty minutes a month and they take them in two fifteen-minute increments to do innovation. So it's their white space time. It means that they can't take any calls. Nobody can walk in their office. They get to do research. They get to bounce a ball and talk in a conference. They can do anything they want. But it's about coming up with a creative idea, however they choose to do that. Sometimes they go on walks and ask prompting questions with each other. But they get that time and then they do a share out, right? Want some accountability, like, well, they do improve around the ball on there. So they come back and they're like, yeah, so like we did this and this and this is what we came up with. This is kind of cool. So it's giving them sort of the, the space, the freedom, the support to be able to have innovative opportunities. And there's innovative prompts and things you can do to kind of guide that and make sure you're monitoring that. But if you're really going to commit to it, what are the ways to do it? White space is one of them, you know, to think about that. And maybe it's, you know, once a month, we all get together for fifteen minutes, whatever it is, lots of ideas. So just something to think about. Innovation isn't an island. Like, you know, we're humans. We like to connect, you know, support each other, do this together. And figure out your story around innovation. We talked a little bit about that earlier and let's see. Oh, yeah, this is one of my favorite cartoons. It's always sit, stay, heal. Never think, innovate, be yourself. It's two dogs. I think they're so cute. So in other words, there's a lot of directives. We shoot out a lot of directives to people, but we don't sit there and give them the opportunity to say, hey, just, you know, be creative instead of barking orders. You know, it's sort of a two-way street. So it's important. I'll share one cool innovative thing that I used to do because it took very little time and it was a favorite of staff and everybody was very busy. We did what we, I call them TED Talk Tuesdays. And so every Tuesday between five and ten minutes, I didn't always go. Nobody had to go. I would set up a TED Talk in a room, in an office. Sometimes they were surprised with treats, sometimes not. And there was a bowl and I would have a prompting question in the bowl if they choose to grab the question out of the bowl and they could just go in and watch the TED Talk. And I will tell you that after the third time, everybody went and when they walked out of there, they were energized and talking friendly. It was like I gave them drugs. I mean, it was really incredible. Who knew? And sometimes the TED Talks were just random, that they would come out talking about something like, oh, did you see how he did this? Or, hey, you know, we should think about it this way. And so it, it really inspired them in a lot of ways. And it's, they get a break for ten minutes anyway. And I, I had thirteen unions to deal with. And so I said, hey, it's your break time. You can do anything you want. Or you can go in this room and watch a movie and there's some treats in there. You decide. I can't force you to do anything. And they went every single time. In fact, I had to move the time three times because some of the inspectors in the field couldn't make it and they wanted to make it. So lots of different ways to do it, right? Okay. So, um, okay. What type are you? So there's lots of different types of innovators, right? There's the idea generator, the person that comes up like, you know, you're the one that thinks of all the ideas all the time or the creative one. Maybe you're the one that likes to explore and research. Maybe you're the person that actually likes to implement and experiment and do it like, oh, put me in the front seat. Like, I'll go, you know, I'll go test out the new car or I'll, I'll try that idea. Maybe you're somebody who likes to build and put together things. So there's lots of different ways to, um, to, or different styles of innovation. Maybe you're more of the challenger, you know, maybe you're like, well, why is that innovative? You know, maybe you're an acquirer. Maybe you're a neglecter. Maybe you're someone who just doesn't support or help at all. Maybe you just sort of, you know, maybe you're the squasher. Maybe you're collaborator. Maybe you don't generate ideas or maybe you don't like to do the research. But, um, but you know, like, I'll talk to you about it and I'll share your idea with somebody else. You know, maybe you just sort of, you know, pass it along. And maybe you're the validator, like, hey, who, who brought for you? Go for it. I'm not involved. I don't want to be any of these other things, but who brought for you, right? So maybe you're that. It would be good for you to know which one you are. And it's also good for you to know that you have teams or departments. If you're trying to do an innovation project or anything, do you have a mix of these, right? Diversity is good. If you have fifty people with ideas, who's going to do them? Right? Who's going to take it to the top and try to get budget for it? So what I'd like you to do is pick which one you think you are. Who should innovate or are you? And it could be more than one. Maybe there's two. I can see some people like one. Kind of this, some kind of that. All right. Share outs. Who are you? What kind of innovators do we have in the room today?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I'm the builder.
The builder, we need a builder, right? Somebody's got to put it together. All right. What else we got?
I'm an idea generator and a collaborator socializer. I do love like think tanks and like brainstorming sessions, things like that, and then where ideas come from them.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, what else we got?
Uh, I would be builder, collaborator, socializer.
Okay, Jennifer?
Builder, validator. I'm going to validate and say, good job. You go do that.
So thanks. Okay, so.
I have a challenge inquisitor as well as the experimenter.
Ooh, experimenter. Fun. Okay, Rebecca?
I'm an, I'm an idea generator, but I'm also an explorer researcher. So it just depends what organization I've been in because sometimes you don't have that historical knowledge available for them to tell you whether it's going to work or not. So sometimes I'm having to kind of wear both hats.
Okay, explorer. What do we have over here, team?
I'd say builder and challenger inquisitor.
Okay. Builder, challenger?
I'm an experimenter. I'll try anything.
I like it, the experimenter. You're a good type, you're good with risk. Anybody else?
I'd be a idea generator and explorer researcher.
Nice.
I'd probably say explorer researcher.
Okay, good. It's a good mix in the room then. All right. So the good news is that we have an activity. So I know this is just going to get, we're going to build upon other things. So, um, all right, we've got a paper and pen, right? So what I'd like from you is, we only have one minute. And there's no restrictions. So let's pretend, for the sake of pretending, you have all the budget in the world, you have all the resources in the world, you have all the staff in the world, you have all the time in the world, you have everything you could possibly need and want. The sky is the limit. And for one minute, what I want you to do is write down a particular problem or challenge. One of the biggest problems or challenges, could you? I prefer this organization that you're facing. Like, I really wish we could do more of this, or this is kind of an issue with me. Could be anything you want. But I want you to write it down, spend a minute kind of writing what the problem is. And that's all I want you to do, okay? Just write down what the problem is and then we're going to move on to some other elements of this. So write down what you think the biggest problem in this organization is right now. Okay? The other stuff will come into play later. For you, what your perspective, not what it should be, not what your constituents say or someone else has told you, what do you think, if there's one thing you could solve that you would like to work on? Recruitment retention, generating revenue, communication with them, whatever. I don't know. There could be a hundred things. Building a pool on the road. I don't know. Something actually came out of session one time. They did. They wanted a pool on the rooftop of the city hall. But instead, we got a snack shack and benches and flower garden. But it came out of that session. Just saying. All right. Important for you to write these down.
And so you just want us to write that one thing down or like go in?
Explain it a little bit. Yeah. Like, you know, don't put like retention, put, you know, public safety, recruitment and retention, you know, whatever. I mean, you can explain it a little bit, write the problem out a little bit. So again, to kind of explain it to somebody in your thirty-second elevator pitch, you could explain it. Hope everybody has something. Okay. So if you haven't finished writing down, it's okay. So now what I'd like you to do is we're going to get into groups. Three groups. Now Caroline is particularly excited about it. She wants to transfer. So we're going to get into three groups. Council needs to be split up because there's three groups. So just make sure that at least each one of you are in one of the groups, okay? It's just four of you. So maybe we can have a table here. You have to split up because you two in the audience, you're going to be involved too. So I need a group here, maybe a group here, maybe a group here. I'll give out my chair. So, so it'd be like four, four and three, I think are the groups. But I need you to break apart from your current group. Bring your question, your challenge question with you. Bring your question with you and bring it up. So get into three groups if you have to bring your chair. To join some other people. Wherever you want to go, but council, there's going to be two councils, one of the groups obviously, but just make sure. So this table is one group and then there's two sets up here. So this is what we're going to do. You each have ten seconds. I'm going to say ten, but it'll take longer. You have ten seconds to explain to the group your challenge question, right? The problem that you want to solve and work on. So basically, you're trying to influence and share your question because that's the one you want this group to pay. So each of you are going to share your question and add. and after you each do that, then you're gonna vote on which question you're gonna work on. Okay? So you each have 10 seconds to share out your problem, your challenge. Share your problem, and then you're gonna vote on which one you're gonna work on today. You're gonna vote, so you each gonna pitch it. You're gonna say longer. If I say it even further, you can ask the president.
My problem is. So people have a chance to pre-order your notes back. What it has to be about. Especially for the. Some money, 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 that's what I'm talking about. This committee. We're standing here. And no, I just. And I have that written down.
We have a problem in every red room.
I have that written down. My everybody knows how to skin. That was my point. Have to be inspiration.
I can listen all night.
So you should all share it out by another question, right? Everybody who shared out their question? If you shared out your question, now vote on which one you're gonna work on. So you each have shared. So you've each have shared the problem statement, right? Now you all have to vote on which one. Okay, make sure specific. Just what you're gonna work on. So give a big topic and kind of narrow it down. You're gonna work on something specific. Okay? So like that, you have the one you're gonna work on. So have you figured out which one you're gonna work on? Did you guys figure out which one you're gonna work on? If you figured out which one you're gonna work on. Okay, so pause. If you figured out which one you're gonna work on, come back. If you figured out which one you're gonna work on, if you're still working on that, fine. But if you figured out which task you're gonna work on, I want you to come up with, each of you, at least five different ideas or ways to improve or fix that problem. And you're gonna write them down, then you can talk about them. So if your problem is, I don't know, retention, I want you to write five ideas, how you think you can solve retention. Remember, you have all the money, all the staff, all the time, all the creativity, everything at your disposal. Here's how I'm gonna solve retention. Here's my five things. Each of you have to come up with five. Then you will share your five ideas. Okay?
So you're starting you team wise or should you individualize?
So individually, you are gonna write down five things. Then after your five things, you will share the five things. So individually, start writing your five ideas. Individually, each five ideas. Oh. Individually. Five ideas are mentioned. We have money, the budget, the time, the staff, everything at your disposal. Five ideas on how to fix that problem. We're, we're. Individually, you will each come up with. Whatever five magic ways you can fix this problem. Then you will each share all of your five ideas. Got it? Like the phone game, right? Almost.
And then if you don't subscribe, you're just getting wrong by yourself. So many views.
Do you wanna share?
Okay. I've paused.
You're not sure right here, okay?
Yes. Probably do this next.
Stretch your toes out.
Keep nice, I'll do whatever you want.
Once you've come up with your five ideas, share each of your five ideas with the group. So once you've all come up with five ideas, share all five of your ideas. Then I want you to solve the problem. Now here's the thing, here's the thing, you guys. The whole idea behind this, this is one form, brainstorming. This is rapid experimentation and brainstorming. We're not gonna actually experiment it, not likely today, not time. But this is a rapid process. So the idea is, we're not gonna do the ton of research in three days. Solve the problem. So. Share your five ideas and then start solving the problem.
Okay, so state of the art technology process award, bringing product to the city. A limited monthly ownership training and education. Uh, new building and offices for. Offer more than just regular projects. Things that, and Dr. Sal, no safety, and team building practices. Have innovative technology. The reason for that is a new project. Meaning that like in order to attract. New.
Well, I can just say it.
Let's get everyone's bullet time.
So we're writing how, we're solving the problem. So deep thinking.
Right, that's state of the art.
The other thing is.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. It's across the course. And buildings that actually.
Be as specific as possible.
Okay, so.
Be as specific as possible.
Can I say state of the art, whatever you wanna say, technology. Is that what your building's?
Be very specific.
Yeah, the tech building.
All these different things for those people. Then maybe some of you.
Very specific, less than one minute left.
That would be part of it.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
It's not just, right? It's administrative and whatever. Yeah.
Make sure you've written it down, we're almost done. Write your solution. One solution?
Overall, there's just one thing? But you know, are you gonna fix it? I'll make it down.
Yeah, I agree. Isn't I seen that you're not just wasn't.
It's really popping.
I don't know.
And, but he's back.
Okay, you guys ready? Everybody ready? Still writing? Are you guys ready? 30 seconds. 30 seconds. 30 seconds. All right, pick a spokesperson who's gonna present to the group. Pick a spokesperson for the group.
Now we're gonna have one fix, nine things. We have thirty fixes with nine issues identified that all need fixed.
And I just thought.
So. So thank you for participating in that. Hey, is that hard to do?
No, with unlimited money.
Did anybody fall victim to hierarchy? Because there were higher levels of authority. Did you feel like you could be, say anything you wanted, even though there was a chief councilor? Everybody feel okay? I'm just saying. Anybody fall victim to group thing? Like, all go along with the group? Everybody feel like they overpay my voice? It's always kind of interesting. All right, let's hear your ideas. Who wants to go first? First show me your problem and tell me your solution. That is a spokesperson.
Okay, so our problem. I'm sorry. Our problem was identified was recruitment and retention. So just kind of an overall staffing issue. So after several reiteration, we narrowed it down to just a really simple strategy. So it was build a comprehensive staffing plan inclusive of state of the art technology, equipment and workspace to support the city's community and visitors that embrace a work-life balance and joint service.
Very cool. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, go ahead.
All right. With an unlimited budget, huh?
It makes the process easier.
Well, our issue is communication. Communication including the city council and communication with the public. Well, that's not a real problem. Just everybody knows what's going on in the city. So we're planning a full-scale communication campaign that includes with a kickout party at Bret Hart Theater. I'm gonna elaborate. There are kickout parties with unlimited funds where we invite the public, come down and meet your councilperson. And put them up on the stage, let them roam around. Whether they maybe have specific things that you wanna talk about and you can ask your councilperson alive and in color. And be able to provide a little food for them. After that.
Lobster tails, champagne, right?
It was food and drink. Now maybe not alcohol because that, you know, there's a liability. Unless we have this somewhere. The other issue is we also start then, right after that, a campaign on social media, a campaign in the local newspaper, both written and electronic on Nextdoor, where we have a highlight a councilperson each month and say.
Or staff person.
Or staff person. This is, this is, this is what Isabel believes. This is what she's done. This is what she wants to do. And do that every month. Or maybe every other week, make it more generic. And make sure that everyone knows what's going on with the damn park over here. Because they all think nothing's happening. So we're gonna provide all that communication.
That's good. All right, very good. Team three.
What they said will be added sentence by making it a great place.
Do you do the exact same thing with the same answer, same solution, same everything?
Yep, we have unlimited funding, yep.
Retention, employee retention and recruitment. Yeah, you know, you have all those wonderful things, but it's gotta be a great place. Keep them.
Okay, okay. So well done, everybody. So what did you find the most challenging in this process?
For me, it's. Cause I had unlimited resources and everything. I mean, I thought about housing and different.
Right, chicken and the egg kind of situation.
You build apartments, homes.
I mean, there was.
So we forgot about the unlimited fund part and so we weren't really thinking about until after.
That's okay.
Yeah.
That's okay. Any other challenges or anything that you felt was interesting through the process? I can tell you from an observation of things that I observed, which was very interesting. But any other interesting observations or feedback that you'd like to share?
The perspective.
Huh?
The perspective was completely different from each of us.
Yeah, she was a planner.
They wanted to make sure the salary was good. They had great equipment and training and.
I was kind of like plugging it all together, like funding and keeping them here. Trying to make sure that we have salaries and bonuses and opportunity and then the public will fall in. And a concern with you guys is having a big lavish party and having lobster and all that is going to be criticized by the public, which is what you didn't want to accomplish because the public is gonna go, who's spending tax dollars? You know, my tax dollars being spent on a comedy show or whatever's going on now.
Those are communications, Grant.
Yeah. Can you say that to the whole staff? This is grand money.
All right. Your spots. One of the answers I obviously is a lot of things. It's challenges. Shit, come back. I want you to have a break a minute. Does she have?
Time, good time.
I am, I am. I am, I am. Well, if you wanna try this early, then I need to. So. So, what you had. What you all had, um, there are a lot of innovation techniques out there, right? This was just one little. This was just one little process, right? This is like a little mini brainstorming session, right? Which, um, you know, you sort of did okay, to be honest, I'll give you five. Yeah, there, um, some of you had one more specific than others, which was good. Um, there was definitely some interesting things about, you know, who led, who didn't lead, and, um, so there was some interesting observations, but you did a pretty good job for your first round. Um, those, those aren't easy. Um, it's one technique, brainstorming, people have done it with sticky notes, right? You've always seen a lot of those things where you do sticky notes. Um, brain netting. Uh, brain netting would be something like, um, let's say we decided to move forward with one of the ideas, and then you take one element of that idea and you net it out. So, you do the three sixty perspective, like, how does this affect the community? How does it affect publicly? Um, you know, where do you fund it from? Does your attorney have an issue with it? Does it serve the general plan? Like, you know, you start netting it out like a web. Um, and you net out that particular idea, lots of devil advocates that are participating. Um, there's a lean approach where it's through observation and empathy. That's often where you go out and you sort of observe. So, like, for me, I was doing an observation, so I would have lots of feedback and a different perspective, because I observed your behavior, your, you know, your inputs, all that kinda stuff. So, there's that as well, um, and using empathy as part of that process. Rapid experimentation. Um, we have done a lot of teams where we'll actually spend the day and we'll go through various elements of innovation. We'll actually take you out, like, we'll actually go test marketing with this stuff. Um, we had some people where we, um, you know, they were testing, uh, I can't remember all the different things that we did, but we, you know, one of them was council wanted. Um, the council believed that the code enforcement ordinance was too aggressive, too assertive. Um, it also didn't cover a lot of things that they wanted to cover, they wanted a complete overhaul. Well, to do something like that for our organization would be, um, it was, we calculated it to be about twenty-five thousand dollars with the staff time, um, how many hours, X, Y, Z. So, um, we said, our ordinance is fine, you don't think that's the problem. Um, so, I took fifteen staff, we went door to door, we spread them out to the whole city, we asked three questions, we covered four hundred individuals, and we asked them about our ordinance. Ninety-nine percent of people said what? Didn't even know there was an ordinance. So, it was about education, it wasn't about change in the ordinance. And then they shared with us what they liked and didn't like about the ordinance. We also did door hangers everywhere, so we actually have got over a thousand people's input in ninety minutes. And what we found was, they really wanted education, they wanted to know how to report what they needed to report, and they wanted a single point of contact. So, we came up with code enforcement cards, we put their picture on it, we told them what the ordinance covered, we told them how to have a single point, this is your ordinance, this is your officer for your area. Um, did it as a marketing strategy, explained all the things that they didn't understand on the card, did a mass mailer. I hired a temp for this, we had twenty-seven hundred phone calls in that week when we did the mailer. Guess what? Twenty-one hundred of them were, hey, so cool, I love what you guys are doing, it's nice to know, thanks. That was it. Of the ones that were left, only half of them were complaints. The other half were actually more like, oh, but, you know, I have a question on this, or I didn't understand this, or like, what do you think of this? Or, hey, I do wanna put a fence up, like, what's my process? So, um, it was huge. So, I took it back to council and said, well, we're not gonna do an ordinance. You know, occasionally get to say no. We can if you want to. However, this is what we did. We did an experimentation, and we went out there and we talked to X amount of people this fast. Instead, we did an education campaign, here's the cards, and they were like, these cards are awesome, this was great. And what it turned out to be, once we dove deeper into the process, it was only three people that went to council that won ordinance change. So, are we gonna change an ordinance that affects a hundred seventy thousand people because three people didn't like it? Um, and two of them were in a neighbor dispute. So, um, all that said, thoughtful to resources, innovative, fun, um, the community had a whole new report with code enforcement staff. They were like, oh, my gosh, they're not just these people that find people, like, this was a great connection point. So, it was a very cool, innovative approach, right? It was just try to something different. And it really only took staff ninety minutes, was all electronic, I took them to lunch afterwards, I did a thirty-minute presentation to council, and we were done. So, anyway, innovative approaches. Um, so that's a rapid experimentation example of, you know, doing different kinds of things. Think tanks was another one, we brought that up. Um, we do offer think tanks if you guys ever wanna do one, um, and then just creating sort of, um, energy. And I won't get into that because we're sort of running a little bit behind. So, um, all right. What is most important? Innovate, no, we tried that once, it didn't work. Have you ever heard that before? Made the ones advice. What's most important? I think most important is, we talked about it at the beginning, what is our belief system around innovation, right? What do we think about, what do we feel about it, what is our story around it? And that we learn, you know, can we keep learning, can we keep growing? Um, you know, we ask the question, are we gonna commit, how much are we gonna commit, and are we gonna implement anything? Um, the biggest challenge that you will face is that, you know, a lot of people do this, and then they go back and go, oh, my gosh, I just had this innovation thing, da-da-da-da, and everyone else is going, huh? Like, they didn't take the class, like, so they weren't, you know, they didn't kinda walk through the process. So, they may not be on the same page, or have the same pace, or be in the same mindset, um, you know, that you are, that we talked about. So, um, you know, just awareness to that, you know, as you move forward. And with that, so, quick wrap-up fun trivia. Um, I'm gonna go. Who is the most successful or most innovative company out there?
Tesla?
Current?
Currently. X.
SpaceX.
SpaceX.
G.
Google. Google, Google is number one. Google's number one. All right, this is my favorite question. Um, what was the most successful innovation that is ever?
Slice break.
Most successful innovation?
The telephone.
No.
Internet.
Fax. Nope, nope.
Personal computer.
Nope.
Car.
Nope.
Posters.
Shoes.
No, no, and it's not the light bulb.
Why?
No. I mean, I guess it depends on who you ask, but there's still a lot of answers, but hands down the most innovative.
Give us a, like.
An innovation invention, it's in your house.
The microwave.
No.
TV.
No.
Radio.
Refrigerator.
No.
What'd you say, refrigerator?
No.
Sugar.
Icebox.
No, you're close.
I said toilet.
That's a pretty important one.
Yes, it was great innovation. Um, and who can be innovators?
Anyone.
Awesome. Well done, take a five-minute break, good job, you guys. It's an innovation one-on-one.
Toilet. I do appreciate. I was in the Mont Jordan for a month, uh, helping a factory, a government factory build our products. And my coworker who lived there full-time, he said, uh, whatever you do, make sure you go to the bathroom before you go to work, and don't utilize it before you have to leave. Because if you have to go to the restroom in the factory, you'll find out it's nothing more than a hole in the ground and a brush like you clean your toilet with, and a water hose. So, there's no toilet. And that's just, you don't want to do that. So, I appreciate that, but toilet. That was, uh, right after that. Well, the officers, of course, have regular bathrooms, but the factory did.
So, I give this to you again, promise not to look, Richard, you just have got these ideas, so I'm gonna give it to you. Promise not to look, right?
We just went through that, right?
Yes.
Oh, so I wish we'd heard about that. Contractor. Yeah, 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 I mean, Hugh is just so patient. I guess you do. So, she knows this has happened before, you said, but honestly, I sort of expect. I didn't expect to drag out.
Here's the thing, they rely on private sector. I guess, especially like when, like, Corrigan Katrina. Or even like looking at. Like Ford shifting.
We want a grant to have a professional person come in from a half-international and help us develop a strategic plan. Oh, that's right, you know about this. It's this kinda nice. That's what it helps come out of this is. In fact, I interviewed Martin Huberty last, last night. Great enthusiasm. Refreshing to talk to people who are so. Because you wonder. There's people out there. Yeah. We're glad you asked, well, you didn't ask, we'll tell you. Yeah, next time when you, uh, Teresa, who was our new county CFO, whatever her title is.
It's all the red.
Yeah, played off with her husband, I guess. Would you mind asking? The questions are interesting. You know, and that's what Martin says, he's, oh, we got a newsletter, we can put you in the newsletter, about the home repair program. You know, after the big show, how come people didn't write those? Shocking that further along, you know, just going to the reservation. Just so much. There's probably a lot less. Oh, my God, that's crazy.
You've been in the government way too long, girl.
Well, I'll tell you. Getting hooked up to CS2. And there's still, there's all over the. Why don't you just? When, when that truck showed up with that entire house. They talking spy guys. Oh, I'm so. That guarantee. I was there when they pulled it off the truck. So, the first, you know, five guys get trained.
They wanted us to do a hot wash after.
People don't.
And go, what didn't work, what should we have had in place, they have not done that. After the fish administration.
There's a hole right there. I just gotta run my romance through that.
And we also made names of departments that fell.
I loved it when the interview.
Did not do their jobs.
Would you for sure?
And I'm just chewing on this, this, they can't get past that. He's the. And not publicized it, just add it to the next people, all the stuff, those boxes, what goes off in one plant, and no one ever.
That's amazing.
I have to say something, it's really bothering me, Dan, and I wanna go back to what you said, they want a little bit more information. So, we don't wanna put how.
I've already told a couple other affiliates, one of Jimmy Carter. This could change the whole project. We had a thousand. If we had been chill, this could film. I asked Chill from CS2, I said, so, are you guys involved at all in the handbags? That's right. Let's find someone. Did you see sixty minutes last Sunday night? Oh, my gosh, you should have liked the watch, it was a ninety minutes. The last half hour was about. It's a three D panel, the size of the house, parts of the entire house, liquid. And I almost called CS2, and I said, uh, are you guys watching? Because it is. It's completely, you have to watch it. It makes these. Brown, nodular. This is, CS2's my children. Not by, it's not a habit. And it comes pretty. Molded proof, I would say, moldy proof.
Sure, my.
It's a little more expensive. But once you get it up there.
So, someone's got innovation around it, whether it's with signage or their marketing on their website, have ways to make sure that you market the word and like. Yeah, but I mean, like, I would think that, I mean, like, if you said, like, oh, habitat's doing really innovative. What innovative, and then you list them, like, with the term, because then it shows. They're marrying insult, you need to advertise it too.
Well, we had the ABC News ten, that second one story, uh, two, two Monday nights ago.
That's so exciting.
I'll tell you what, give me your email address.
Oh, yes, please do.
We can do better, we can spec better, how do we market it better if we're not. You're so afraid to, to offend me, I said.
Coming back, people. You're welcome.
On a, on a national level, we're, again, the pandemic, we have not done.
Welcome back, welcome back. Thank you, everyone. Session three. Session three, all right. I know you wanna chat, but. All right, so. How do we do on the first session? We saw a time. Technology, which is fire. Yeah, I'm excited.
This isn't even a scared issue, one.
So, lots of good topics to come this afternoon, I'll do my best to get through it. Um, there will be some more activities, of course, and I apologize, and I have a throat larynx, and I've literally been talking for five days straight. Um, so my throat's a little scratchy, I'm not sick or anything, I just.
I'm sure we can come up with some hot water for you, Chase.
Hey, yes, thank you, so, um, so, yes, that'll go in a little bit. All right, so, um, we're gonna start with, um, great topics, communication, service, leadership, what all those things mean. Um, we'll just jump right into the agenda for time's sake. So, we're gonna talk about different styles, personality styles, um, understand our belief system, the stories, we'll dig in a little more there. Communication, our success signals, not just body language, but we're gonna do a really nice deep dive into that. Um, we'll talk about leadership, roles and responsibilities, service philosophy, and then some fun topics. So, with that, we're gonna start with the. So with that, we're gonna start with the first one. So I think that, um, for me, I tend to be very, very passionate about, um, belief systems. I think belief systems are sort of where, um, the story starts, right? And then we tell ourselves the story, or somebody told the story about something and it goes, how many times you sell the same story? Right? I had this story my mother always says, you know, she told me once, like twenty years ago, she's like, you know, you're not good with directions. That story has stuck with me for twenty years. So every time, right, I make a wrong turn, or I can't figure something out, or whatever, you know, I'm just not good with directions. And one day I was like, I really don't like that story. Like, ninety percent of the time I find my way just fine. I grew up with a Thomas Guide, right? Like, I figured that out. Um, and I'm like, you know, I need to change that story so that I believed her. I put meaning behind what my mother said about the story. Well, then it became a habit, right? Um, and then my behavior and my actions ultimately resulted in I wasn't paying attention to maps as much. And I was like, let somebody else try, cause I'll never find my way. And this whole story grew and grew and grew, as stories do, right? So I'm kind of passionate about this whole topic. Um, you know, belief system is nothing more than a thought you've thought over and over and over and over again. Um, something I think that's really important to be aware of as, as we start this conversation about the stories that we tell and, and our belief systems is that in smaller communities, as you know, your stories are ten X. So whatever stories are being told or talked about or happen are ten times more weighted and impactful in smaller jurisdictions than bigger. That is a huge benefit to you and a huge detriment to you. So it's one of those that we don't always think about that. You're like, oh, it's a close knit, it's small, it's great. There's a lot of benefits to that, but also a lot of challenges to that. So it's something to keep in mind as leaders as we move forward with, with stories. So I think what, what I believe to be very important is that, you know, as we travel down and we talk about things with each other and we have these stories, is to stop and ask the question. I'm a big believer in stopping and asking the question and, you know, am I on track with this story? Um, do we ever stop and think like, am I really on track with this story that I told myself about this other individual, about this community member, about this particular group of people? You know, the first step in all of this to change a belief or a thinking pattern or how we feel is to question it. And so to talk about, am I on track with this message? Where did it come from? It took me a long time to remember that my mother's the one that told me I don't know where I'm going. And usually I'm driving her around, but I kind of went back to the root of it. And I was like, okay, well, that's not a great story. So I kind of figured out like, well, where did this story start? The most important element to our belief systems and our stories is that, um, the fact based truth of it. And are there facts that support the story? And often, if we can't figure out what the facts are, we will find facts that support what we want to believe, right? And so our stories often are not based on fact. They're usually based on emotion, or they've been exaggerated or other types of things. So one of the most important questions you can act yourself is, is this a fact based truth? And facts are an interesting thing, right? Cause facts can be distorted too. So we sort of have to think about, well, what are the facts around the story that I'm telling myself? Whatever that story might be. Um, you know, sometimes we don't think about the fact that like, well, I don't like that story. You know, I don't like the fact that maybe, um, I've got this label on myself now that I can't find my way in direction, so I might get lost. It actually started making me kind of afraid to drive on my own. I'm like, well, I'm gonna get lost, or I don't know. And it's like, that's none of that's true. But I was finding confidence of it all over the place. Um, and I decided, well, can I change it? I'm like, well, yeah, I can. I actually do a pretty good job finding my way around. So it's kind of having that sort of internal dialogue with yourself and restoring, um, what you're telling yourself. The also, the other big element to our belief systems and our stories, um, that we will talk more about is, um, how or when we can let go. There are stories that we've had sometimes since childhood. There are stories, um, that people have shared. How long do we want to hold on to some of the, the bad stories? Right? We spend eighty-five percent of our time from the past statistically. Sometimes more, depends on generation, depends on a lot of other variables. Between sixty-five and eighty-five percent of our brain lives in the past. So we're always telling stories about things. And so, you know, I, my son and I have this story that we used to tell and I, we were talking last night, a cousin of mine visited and I said, you know, I said, we've been telling that story for a really long time. It's changed, it's been exaggerated. And I said, I don't think it's a really good story. You know, cause families are always talking about family stuff like, but maybe we should change the story and just sort of let go of that. And he goes, yeah, maybe we should. And it was kind of interesting. So we kind of had this really interesting topic about it. Um, also, as we're telling stories, sometimes judgment has sort of a sneaky habit of, um, of getting in, right? Like, cause what does the story really mean? Are we judging people? Are we thinking differently of people? So, um, this is just sort of a start to the tempo of thinking about, you know, what, what do we believe? What is the meaning that we've attached to the story? How habitual are we telling the story? Is it a good story or not a good story? Do we want that story to be out in the community? Is it a good story? Do I want to change it? So it's just sort of asking those questions. Um, I actually had these in a card in my purse and sometimes I, I look back at them, but, um, so this is kind of where we're gonna start today to talk about, um, you know, what this looks like. So with that, um. Okay. So we're gonna talk about communication. So that was just an intro to this. We are gonna talk about why communication is important. Um, when it's working, when it's not, um, and then we're gonna talk a little bit about disaster response with communication. So I have a question for all of you. Um, when do you think communication is working? Like, what is the metric? What is the sign? What is the feel? What is the thought? What is the evidence that communication is good? How do you know?
When it's spelled right.
When it's spelled right? Oh, my God, that's awesome. I'm gonna leave that in there now. That is awesome.
Now you have a new story.
I can't spell. Um, yeah, that's awesome. Okay, so what do we, when do we think it's working? Like, what, where's evidence that shows?
Thing is, people are participating in a, in the conversation and so it's not just one sided. It's multi-sided.
Okay. What else? How is truthful? Truthful? Okay. What else do we know that communication is working?
When there's understanding.
Understanding? Both sides?
Yeah, so I think communication is important, but I think understanding is equally as important because if you're talking to someone who's not listening to you or wanting to hear what you have to say, then what's the point? Right?
Mm-hmm.
So understanding, in my opinion, is equally as important as communication is.
Yeah, cause you're trying to communicate something and you want them to understand what you're trying to say, right?
Someone is open to hearing what you're saying.
Yeah.
You have to know they received it and they understand it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Because some people are just waiting to talk.
Or they're listening to respond.
Yeah.
To actually listen to you.
Yeah. Yeah, they have ten things they want to say and they're not really hearing what you're saying, cause they want to say what they want to say.
Funny story.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull that story out again. Well, what else you got? When, when is it working? When is communication working? How do we know it's working?
When you see a result from it, like.
Like what result? Give me more.
Like if somebody's telling you about something they want you to do and you'll know that that person's understanding with the end result, because it happened the way they asked you to get it done.
Okay. What else? Good. What else we got? How else do we know?
When there's buy-in or people are following you to the end goal, I guess.
Long as it's not hierarchical and mandated.
Yes.
Yes, you're right. Good. When is it not working? How do you know when it's not working?
People are talking over each other.
Which can also be a cultural thing, cause in some cultures, that's like.
Oh, my gosh.
Thing. Right? Which is, which is something to think about, right? Kind of interesting, but to your point, yes. Nobody likes to be interrupted.
When people aren't, their takeaway from the conversation doesn't leave them feeling hurt or, or that their, that their point was given across, understood.
Anything else?
I, I think when there's no similarity in it. When there's no passion in it.
Yeah, that kindness word, I love that word. Yeah. There's not kindness in it. Um, there can often be sort of a disaster response to communication, right? Cause communication can make or break anything, right? Marriages, relationships with kids, relationships with neighbors, even your staff. All kinds of relationships. I mean, we're all in a different relationship, multiple relationships, and there can be disastrous responses to that. And, um, you know, it takes time. You know, when, when trust and those things are broken, it takes time to come back from that. So, um, there's a journey to take there. So we are gonna talk about one of the ways to have very successful communication. One of my very, very favorite, very favorite topics, just love this. Um, so we're gonna talk about body language, that's a pretty common one, um, but we're gonna go a little, uh, deeper into that. I, um, had this example, I always find it fascinating. So there was this huge study that was done where I think it was thirty thousand people they studied who went into a doctor's office. And without the doctor talking, within thirty seconds, almost ninety percent of people had decided if they trusted, respected, liked, or would keep that doctor.
And he didn't talk?
And there was no talking. All because of. Environment. What they saw, what the room felt like to them. What the body language was like, right? What they were in proximity of, if they were sitting in a cold sterile place, if they felt in a temperature. A lot of variables. Within thirty seconds, they had a story about the doctor, if they were a trusted person or not. Without any conversation, without knowing their education, other than the fact that they had a doctor's and a degree. So kind of interesting how impactful some of those things can be. Interesting statistic, you've probably heard this before, words count for about seven percent of the interpretation of a message. Seven percent, which means that after today, you'll remember maybe seven things that I said. I'm hoping more than that, but we'll see how it goes.
I know you can't drive.
Yeah. Yeah, and patience, and I can't spell. Yes, it's, it's going to be a very good day. All good. Um, so historically, the Greeks, um, this dates back way back in time, that, you know, they started on, um, different personality styles with earth elements. You know, everybody always hears that from sort of the yogi world, the holistic world, you know, if you're a fire chakra, you're an earth element, you're an air element. Um, they started talking about personalities way, 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 way back in time. Um, and they attach them to the various earth elements. As time passed, you've got Myers-Briggs, this assessments, right? We've all done all these different types of assessments. I find assessments are good and helpful. I'm more a fan of what do I do with it? Like, I know what my personality style, I know what all of your personality styles are, but what I want to know is how I communicate with your style, right? That's the most important thing to me. Um, so that's what we're gonna talk about today. So that's kind of the, the fun thing that we're gonna walk through. So actually. Everybody gotta pay for a pen? Okay. So what do you think the three top communication signals are? What do you think? I mean, we talked a little bit about language, I saw it, but what do you think the top communication, um, verbal, non-verbal, whatever are? What do you think, what do you think's the most impactful? We already know words are seven percent, so are words that impactful? Maybe they are to you, I don't know. But what do you think's the most impactful? And it'll be interesting to know your perspective, cause that's maybe kind of true to you. What's impactful? At any given time, there are twenty to twenty-five signals being made. At any given time, twenty to twenty-five. Um, our attention span is typically eight seconds before you fidget, think of something else, have movement, do something else. Used to be seventeen percent. Um, experts are saying that it's, um, social media, internet, phones, social media, those kinds of things that reduce our attention span. For good or bad, our attention span. And I can tell you, if you ever have to look at somebody or you look in the eye, that lasts seconds before someone looks away, does something else, whatever. Not good or bad, but you have eight seconds. So something to think about when you're talking and trying to frame people. It's kind of interesting.
Um, I've heard that even in email.
Yeah.
People would only read an email for eight seconds.
Yeah. It, it, it's a, it's a very real thing. MIT. Yeah. Being succinct, right? You will have attention.
Long mail.
And generationally too, it's kind of different. Um, MIT did a study, um, and they said that, um, internet specifically reduced the ability for people to concentrate and focus and even hold attention throughout their life. Because of it, so kind of an interesting thing. All right, so what did we have? What were some impactful? Okay.
Uh, eye contact.
That's my number one.
Uh-huh. Uh, body language and then the tongue. Okay, the same.
I had one different. Mine was words chosen. Selected language, selected, yeah, words, okay? I have eye contact that the individual you're talking to is appearing to listen to you so that they're listening and that they are supportive. Their language that they're, they're supportive language coming back at you.
Got it.
Look at me trying to communicate.
Hot, like positive.
Positive, yeah, reinforced language back at me.
Uh, I have eye contact, um, hands slash body movement, um, tone, and I didn't put appearance though.
So I was similar to Alvin. I said body language, eye contact, physical appearance slash hygiene. Hygiene, that's right. How you carry yourself.
Yeah. I smell like a sexual. Oh, do you have smell? Okay. And you have, anything else different? Yeah.
Snicking you?
I am smell sensitive. Yeah, smell makes a big difference. Yeah, but you have to.
Very similar to what everybody else had, eye contact and I put confidence, but that goes along with body language, I think more than.
Maybe body posture.
Yeah.
If you're confident.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, and then appearance.
Usually when someone has their arms crossed like that, that means that you're not engaging.
Right.
But you, you don't give that off right now because you seem confident. Yeah, but you have this confidence about it, the way you're doing it.
Because there's twenty to twenty-five signals. So that's not the primary signal. And depending on.
That's not the number one signal.
You had some.
That's probably what, it's a little chilly back.
Environment, other factors, yeah, go ahead.
To me, it's engagement. When you ask me a question when I'm communicating with you, so with acknowledgement, you're listening to me.
What was your question?
Yeah, exactly.
Sort of your, the top communication signal is sort of maybe that you're most sort of aware of, connected to. So smell sensitive or thoughtful to smells, appearance matters to this person, you know, body language, you know, what are the things that, you know, sort of are cues for you from a communication perspective? So I just, it gives me a vibe on the people. And it's interesting for them to hear, like, eye contact is big for this group.
But not too much, cause you can't be like.
It would be weird. Interesting. You know, a little.
So here are the top ones that came up when you, when you do studies. These are the ones that come up the most. Um, proximity, um, the speed at which, um, they communicate with you. Voice is pitch, power and pace, right? The three Ps, a lot of training on pitch, power, pace, the inflection of the voice, there's an accent. Facial expressions, gestures, tattoos, your energy level, the use of humor, eye contact, cleanliness, hair, teeth, posture, fingernails, clothing, all kinds of good stuff. So a lot of things that can make a difference on, you know, how we communicate, especially if seven percent is only verbal, right? So all good information, probably some things we've heard before. Um, okay. So could you hire some other employees, the ones you have just can't get along with me?
I'm gonna cut that out.
So with that, we're gonna take a fun little assessment activity. You're gonna pass these out and start filling it out. That would be great.
You missed the joke.
You missed the joke. So please fill this out. Now, here's the thing about filling this out. Don't fill it out and check the items that you want to be like, that you should be like. Who are you? Be real or not.
In, in this role.
In general, as a. Probably more this role.
Okay. Not at the mom or at my day job or at night.
Collectively, you're probably very similar in a lot of the roles, but if you need, if you need that direction, do it in this role. All right, thank you. So not what you really want to be or should be, or you were told to be, but who you think you are. Check those.
Unlimited.
Check those. As many as you want to check, yes. So don't get some using to work. See what my son picked for this one.
And as many as you want, right?
Many as you want, yes, I like a lot of them. Or not, whatever you want.
I know, yes, sir.
Yes. No limits to that. Get to one, and you're not sure, I wouldn't check it, 'cause if you're questioning it, it's probably not that strong of a personality style.
A Y.
Yes. Yes. If you've finished, as you've probably figured out, you need to add up. Right, all the Ys, what the numbers, how many Ys, how many Ws you have, right, add up each of the four. Let's see, yeah.
Yeah.
It's also well, right?
Very quick. French.
There's my area now.
Think there are fifteen seconds? Like, just one second. Hey, we're all about there, four seconds? Whatever your highest number was, please circle it. Or your second highest number was, just put it underlined.
Second highest.
Yeah, so highest circle, second highest underline it. Unless, and if there's two that are the same, two underlines or two circles, if it's the same number. Recognizing that we're all much, and a mix of all different kinds of beautiful things. Okay, are we done?
No. I didn't know I was supposed to count, I'm sorry, not detailed.
That's okay, go ahead.
You just let eight seconds window your high.
Truly, truly.
So that all the time.
Truly. So, here are ten more seconds. I'll tell a story while we're reading, we did, my staff and I, we did this many, many, many years ago, and talk about innovative, my secretary, senior secretary, she thought it would be cool, she made us all avatars that matched all her colors, and everybody put them on their cubicles, so that when you walked by, you went, oh yeah. Like, you knew what to do or not do based on the activities and all the stuff that was on the avatar. It was awesome, I still have my avatar, but it was very clever, 'cause, you know, when you're walking by, you're like...
Personality.
You knew what to do or not do, and what to say and not say based on that, I was like, it's really hard, yeah. Starbucks card for that one, that was really good. Yeah, she was great.
We even told her.
Okay, alright, so she'll catch up, okay, so... Alright, so a little share outs, what was your highest number? We'll start over again.
I had a Y.
Your Y is your highest, and what was your second?
A W.
Okay, and, that's it all?
Z, I meant W and X were the same.
Okay.
I meant W and a Z, they're tied. You act like you knew that.
I do. Okay, she's still standing, so we'll go back to her.
I meant W, and then Z second.
Okay.
W, and then Z second.
Okay. WZs, huh?
I'm a Y.
Y primary, what's your second?
X-ray. X.
Those are my two lowest, we're not compatible.
Sorry, we're totally different.
I'm a Y and a W.
Okay. Anyone in the audience?
Q, oh, no, Q. I don't know. X, a, X and next I have is Y.
X and Y.
WY.
WY, oh, you're a planner. Yes. Anyone else? There's no counting, okay, alright, so we'll move on. Alright, so we're gonna talk about the, what the colors mean.
You're not gonna tell us what?
Oh, we're gonna get there. We're gonna get there, we're gonna get there, guys. So, green. Greens are reserved, skeptical, and learners.
What are the colors?
Greens are factual, perfectionist, planners, researchers, analyzers, thoughtful, prepared, literal, exact, logical, quality-focused, thorough, accurate, anyone wanna guess what letter that is? Anybody know, any idea what, what letter that is?
I think that one is... A Z.
Y.
Yeah, I think it's a Y.
What's your Zs? Now, here's the thing about greens, greens, if you're gonna talk to green, if you're gonna talk to green, you better be prepared. Not that a green hates more than you coming in going, I'm so excited, we're gonna... They're like, is there a memo? What's your research look like? They wanna understand, right, be logical, be thoughtful in how you speak to them, ask questions, give them time, explain the how, be specific, be accurate. Don't just pull numbers out of a hat, be serious, be careful, acknowledge other views, send materials ahead of time, they'd like to review. Do not, so much, now this isn't true for everything in every way, right, we have different colors and different styles, so generally speaking, greens, don't, don't go out of order, don't fail to deliver, oh, don't be late. Don't pressure them for a decision, don't rush your presentation, don't exaggerate. Don't tell them to be bold, don't ask them to trust, just trust. They want evidence, don't use emotional appeal, don't joke and loosen up attitude unless they have a strong other color backing them, so...
This is great, right?
This is great. So, this is typically the language that you wanna use when you're having a conversation with somebody who's a green with knowledge. They'll appreciate, they'll appreciate these traits, right? I had a city manager once, I went to her with an idea, our, our businesses were complaining and had some concerns that we had these street fairs, and they said, you know, nobody comes into our businesses, they're out there partying and drinking with the cars, they leave trash around, like, what is the point of doing this, we don't like this event? So I went to a wine tasting stroll, and all the wine events were inside the businesses, so you're drinking and shopping in the businesses, I'm like, ah, brilliant, we should change our event. So I came back to go to my Fran, she was my city manager, and she's a green, predominant, strong green, and I go in with a little bit of a red-style personality, and I'm like, oh, we should change our wine stroll, I've got a better idea, we could do this, we could do that, you should just trust me, I didn't have any memos, I'm just like sharing, 'cause I'm all excited, right, I just came from this event, I have a million things to share, we were having our one-on-one, and she looked at me like I was out of my mind, and she's like, yeah, that's, no, that's just not gonna happen, no, no, we don't have the money for it, shot down every way, so I went back, I pulled out my green card, and I said, okay. So, did a little research, sent her a memo, this is the next day, did all the things that I was supposed to do, paid attention to this, then I went back in and I pitched it, and she said, sure. Here's forty K, I thought of it, figured it out, it was all good. Just changed my language, like, when I said, trust me, she was like, I'm so offended, it's all about trust, like, this isn't, you know, and then it was like this whole thing about that, so I have tested this a thousand times, and I will tell you, majority of the time, it helps a lot. Just knowing what they wanna hear or don't wanna hear, that is for communication style, so I know when I go, you know, and I wanna talk to her, I know that I predominantly have to be in this language arena. Now, greens typically are more challenged by red personality, 'cause they are the complete opposite, and we'll talk about where the reds are. So it's just sort of understanding that if you're gonna talk to somebody in the green world, this is sort of what they like to understand, this is how they like to be communicated with, this is what they want from you. So if you go and talk to a green, and you're all red, you're gonna get what you get out of it, right? So, I actually have these cards with me on my desk, I've memorized them, very, very, very helpful. So, that's the greens. Does anybody, anybody, how many greens do we have? How many predominant greens? Secondary greens? Okay.
What?
She missed, she missed a part of.
What letter? What letter?
I mean, that was your second one.
So that was your second Z.
Z.
I'm a Y.
Yes, okay. Browns, browns are the just-do-it, right, these are the just-do-its, brown is, if it's not broke, don't fix it, stop whining, fish or cut bait, let's get stuff done, let's check the boxes, right? They're direct, they're very structured, they're fast-paced, they like accountability, they wanna know the bottom line, I don't need a whole lot of story. They're achievers, they're builders, they like chain of command, they are on time and on task.
W.
Ws.
Ws. W, well done, W is it.
This is a Calerics, right? Caleric?
Yeah, 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 so brown, do, separate business from social time, browns are a little okay with social, but the browns, you don't wanna walk up on the back and have a whole conversation, right, yeah, no, exactly, no, they wanna talk business, like, what do you want, like, get to the bottom line, like, get to the point. They want their facts, they want a snapshot of the details.
Yeah, we don't usually open things with salutation either.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, right. Present alternatives, no feelings, just facts, do not, don't take offense if they multitask, they really do care about what you're saying, but they got other stuff to do too, right, you're trying to stay on point. Don't challenge them in front of others, they don't like that. No chit-chat before a big conversation, don't be late, don't exaggerate, don't persuade them with feelings and emotions, there's some similarities to green in here. Don't criticize their competency, they consider themselves to be very bright. Don't embrace patting on the back, don't be disorganized, and don't be unsure, they like confidence, 'cause they're confident, right, they're kind of, in some ways, they're a little bit more risk-takers, because they're like, let's get it done, let's move, let's get it done, okay, on the next thing, they're not stressed and worried about if I fail or something happened, like, alright, let's just do something else, right, they're moving on. So, this is your brown language. Any browns in here, predominant browns? Secondary browns?
I, I am one of the two, I haven't got my count figured out.
That's okay, we're getting there, alright, so, blues, 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 blues. Let's work together, boom bah ya, right, harmony, empathy, they're kind, they're all about partnerships and collaboration. They wanna make a personal connection, they want you to show their feelings, you know, they want, ask them to share, praise them, they need recognition, you know, work through problems with them, they're not as good with just giving a directive and walking away. Ask her if they're okay, it's safe for them to express themselves, be patient with them. You know, if you're a hard brown and you're talking to a blue, you have patience, 'cause they need to talk about how they feel about all this, right, you wanna check the box, they're like, no, I need to talk about it. And you're like, I don't wanna talk about it. But it works so well, don't ask, ask goodbye for them, don't go right to business, talk only facts, false flattery, forget to consider their ideas, come on too strong, ask them to make decisions if they haven't consulted others, they're gonna go ask other people's opinions. I had a secretary, she was a very hard blue, like, very, very strong blue, and if you didn't stop at her desk every day and ask her about her weekend or her cat, she didn't like you. Oh, you're rude, you don't care about me, you can't take two minutes to talk to me? You just care that I get the work done, you can't ask how my cat is, you know, my cat's sick, you don't care, you don't care if my cat left? Who are you, right? Blues are all about emotions, all about feelings, if you've got blue as a primary, any blues, any primary blues?
What letter is it?
Secondary blue?
Y.
White Y.
Oh, I'm a Y, which is weird. Yeah, 'cause I'm like Sanguine, I'm Calerics Sanguine in Otherworlds, and so that's kind of odd.
You're a combination, so you're also brown, so browns and blues have some similarities to them too. I mean, you're collaborators, you spoke earlier when you were talking about, like, I love collaborating, I love doing this, I love doing this, and you did four words that were exactly blue, so, there are parts of you that are there too.
Yeah.
So just recognizing the blues, you know, so when you're gonna go talk to someone that's blue, give them a minute, so if you know, you're like, oh, I got nineteen things to do and I've gotta walk down the hall, and blues in the way, you better make sure you have one of these, 'cause you need to talk to your blue, right? And I will tell you. I will tell you this stuff matters more than you think.
You know Steve Archer?
So I'll give you one more story on blue, I had another, I had a former director who had a secretary, secretary was hard blue, director was a hard green, so the director, their, their thinking, their job was, I'm working eighteen hours a day, because I wanna make sure we bring in the revenues, 'cause I wanna make sure I save that job for her. I wanna make sure she always has a job, big heart, right, he's not gonna stop and talk about her cat, he needs to go read a staff report to make sure we get the revenues for the job, right, he cares. He never stopped at her desk, ever. So after years of this, now we're talking complaints, now we're talking unions, now we're talking performance improvement plans, it festers and it grows into all kinds of things. So, all that little stuff matters, you see it every day, all the time. I hear and I observe, like, well, you all are talking, and you're talking in your own style, and not, and not speaking to someone else in their styles. So it's kind of interesting to observe, and it's a hard habit to break, and it's a hard thing to rehab it, to sit there and go, alright, I'm sitting with three browns. Right, or I'm sitting with a red and a green, like, okay, what do they wanna hear from me, what do they want from me, it takes time and energy and effort and thoughtfulness to communicate that way. This is the hard shit.
Doesn't help when you have a shortage of patience.
Yes, yes, exactly, so add that to the next two, right? So add that to the next two, right? Um, okay. So reds. Reds are fun. Um, reds are about freedom, super chill, trust me. We're innovators, they're fast paced, they're funny. They're inspires, they're nonlinear thinkers, right? Um, you wanna present them with energy.
Humors.
Reds. Reds aren't the people typically that you go, hey, can you work on the staff report? Should take you about forty hours. They're like, cool, that sounds horrible. No, I don't wanna do that. Um, do you wanna go down the street and talk to the three businesses? Yes. You know, let me talk to people. Red are very fun. Red'll work on something short term. Red aren't somebody that you stick on a general plan to work on for two years. They'll just poke their eyes. They're like, that's not gonna, I don't wanna do that. Um, so think about that with your, you know, when you're hiring people and you're talking. People understand sort of their strengths, what they love, what they don't. Um, you know, reds, reds don't wanna be serious. They don't wanna only focus on business. They don't like being too structured. Um, they're innovative. Um, tell me it's policy based, speaking in a monotone. Um, they're high energy. You know, they're the big personalities. Um, you typically know who they are. Um, we need all of them in an organization, truly, very important. We need all of them. Um, so with that.
Who was an X? Cause that would be an X, right?
The red?
Yeah.
Who was the secondary X?
X, secondary X? Well, it's an X, X blood. Like X men, but X blood. Any X blood? Oh yeah, you got X in you. Knew that, so I'd like you, take this little, let's not call it a test. Assessment. So.
What was yours?
Uh, it was a Y W.
Are you taking L O K boots?
And you know what I would say?
You said you're a brown. W.
I really hope you all are writing down all your each other's colors.
Green.
Because if you're not, how committed are you to understanding your language, right? Yeah, thank you. So it's good for you to write down a color's commitment um, to understand that. If it were me, I wanna know my council, I wanna know my city manager, and I wanna know my boss.
Isabelle, what were you?
I was a D and then W X. But I don't think I missed one, I'm an X. Still a W.
I'm W and Z, I'm tied. W and D. They were about twenty.
Caroline, you were Y and, but what was that?
They're tied.
They're tied, so it's just two.
I didn't, I had two tops, I don't know.
That's common. Anybody?
Unless I miscounted, I, there might be one of them.
What's my color?
I'm twenty.
I feel like you're red because you're so optimistic and like creative and green.
You're a million.
You?
You're true. It's my color.
Oh, you're a blue.
All together.
Yeah, I'd say a blue or red.
No. Who said purple? I'm actually, three of my numbers are exactly the same and I'm one point off on my fourth. And I've taken it over like twenty years in different ways and I'm always all four colors the same.
So I did this the other day and I came up with gold.
I was, well, I would get it.
And other colored things and charts and stuff that are other colors and different styles you could look up. I just like this approach because it tells you the do's and don'ts. So I literally just look at the cards and go, alright, I'm gonna talk to green. This is how I will be, mine color, my green, right? Okay. Does everybody have down each other's colors?
Yep.
No?
No. Each other?
Yeah.
I'll send it like right here.
No, no, just in general.
A Y W. Karen's a Y W. Yeah, she's a W Z. And Jen, you were a top. The Z W, I think, was that what they're going for. And you were a brown, straight up, right?
So, but you guys finish the next one?
Brown.
So this is just to test your knowledge. What you think if you learned anything from this? So check your knowledge and fill out the next question.
Me, you, and Caroline, I'm staying.
So this girl is somebody that would speak, uh, this phrase, it would be?
So what do you think that that quote, what color is that quote? That statement that you're reading, what color is that statement? So that's why I want you to circle, see if you can figure that out. This is just sort of testing your knowledge real quick. I mean, you had a whole five minute training on it, so. What do you think that those mean? Just a fun little assessment. Artists tend to live in the red zone too. You know, your program artists tend to live very much in the red zone.
Sounds brother. I missed too much.
I don't, I don't know what I'm doing. I don't even know.
So the statement that you're reading, I know, I know that makes sense to you. Part of the crowd, right?
Like, yeah. Maybe this in the Waldorf, or maybe to the Temperance.
Can I assign to that? I have a food here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the kids have a number? No, the adults know you best. So that we know that everybody's temper. So you know, so you can work with them.
W. Uh, brown.
Well, work with the children, you got my hair tone.
Okay. Almost there, ready? Okay, don't be cruel to a heart that's true. What color is that?
Blue.
Blue.
Very blue, right? Oh, my heart, be nice, right? A stitch in time saves nine.
Green.
Brown.
Brown.
Oh, brown.
Right? Get it done, get it done, get it done, get it done. Check the box, check the box, check the box. Right? Hit the road, Jack.
Green.
I said brown.
I said green.
I had brown.
Brown, could be green, but it's mostly brown. Okay? I left my heart in San Francisco.
Blue.
Yeah, it's very blue. I did it my way.
I put brown.
I put green.
It's brown or green.
It's green.
It's green.
It's green.
I don't know.
Brown, it's between brown and green.
Brown? Cause you're both. Yeah, the earth tends to have some of those tendencies too. But brown also likes hierarchy um, in leadership. So brown is like, you can also just tell me what's going on, just go do it. So he doesn't have to do it, or she doesn't have to do it my way. You know? Um, look before you leave.
I said red because I hadn't chose red yet for any of the other colors.
Well, red will leave anywhere.
It's free spirit.
Yeah, red is free spirit. So what else do we have?
Green.
Green.
Green. Um, fifty ways to leave your lover.
I'm so excited. We didn't get that.
Oh, I'm so excited with red.
Oh, I'm so excited?
It's red.
I'm so excited it's red.
Yeah, red. Passion red. Fifty ways to leave your lover.
Blue.
Blue.
Very blue. Don't mess with Texas.
Brown, green. Predominantly brown, but it can be a little green.
Uh, light my fire.
Red.
Red.
Red all the way. People who need people.
Blue.
That's a blue. Let me ride under sunny skies above. Don't fence me in.
I put brown.
I put brown.
I said a vault.
It's more brown, but it can have tendencies. So like anything, it's not all boxed in. As you know, there's lots of different tests. You know, they have animal ones. If you're, if you have dolphin or whale, if you're a puppy dog, or if you're this or that. Here's the thing. It's all about being relatable, you know, having communication with all of, all of the people. Being thoughtful toward communication. So, now we're gonna talk about leadership. So, um, you know, we're all leaders, right? We're leaders in governments, whether we were thrown into it or not. We're leaders in our family, in our units, our offices, all those kinds of things. So, um, we're gonna talk some fun stuff about leadership. So, I have a question for you and I'd like you to write your answer down. I know, it's interactive, it's fun. There'll be a turkey for the best answer to this one. If I came from another planet and had no concept of leader or leadership, how would you explain it to me?
Came from another planet?
No.
How would you explain?
No, round.
How would you explain, explain leadership? This, this.
If I came from another planet and had no concept of leader or leadership, how would you explain it to me?
Take charge.
Tell me, so write it down.
Sorry.
Sentence or two. How would you explain leadership to me? Or leader? Good thinking. Part of the journey.
Do they understand English?
We're gonna assume so.
Grunts and whistles. Blushy lights. Someone's gonna get the right answer. Ball. Right answer. Lines.
Okay. Okay.
Can you get that?
Nothing.
Alright. Ready? So, share outs, who would like to start?
Deal.
You're up.
Alright, I'll go. Um, someone who motivates, someone who people feel comfortable working with, keeps others on task and pushes forward.
Nice. What else we got?
Um, I didn't really write anything down, but I would say that it's someone who will give direction, who will sort of step in front and lead, will only, right? Show you what to do, explain it, but then also do it with you or alongside you as opposed to standing back and telling you this is what you gotta do.
Okay. And you? Good. What else we got?
I put decision maker.
Short and sweet. Okay?
Well, they're not, they're from another world.
I know, exactly.
No, say too much.
There are individuals that the masses look up to, trust and follow. They make decisions for the masses to better their existence.
Thank you.
I said someone who takes charge with confidence and is followed by others. Um, I couldn't think of the word, but not, they're not following them.
Cause they choose.
Cause they, they have to, they're following, because they choose.
Nice, okay. Nice, okay. Over here?
Mine was similar, but it's a way of living that causes others to want to follow. It's not necessary. This is the thing that always gets me about leadership, is it's not always a good thing, you know? Not, there's not all good leaders out there, but there's still people that will want to follow them. So it's just a style of way of acting that causes people to want to follow what it is that they're doing.
Interesting take on it, thank you. Good. Alright, what else we got, Tammy? Who's charged and sets some examples? Good. Alright.
A person in charge, give them direction, sort of topic, has experience with it. Motivate each. Keep, uh, I don't know if that's something that makes sense. Uh, and someone that you should plug up to, that's example.
Two. Nice, good. First example. Yeah. Yours is simple.
She's all different.
Okay. Anybody over here? We'll do one, just one more? One more?
Teacher, the motivator.
Very good, very good. Okay, so what I want to work on next is your leadership statement. I don't know if you've ever made a leadership statement before or done a leadership statement. So, in one to two sentences, I'd like you to make your leadership statement. This is who you believe you are as a leader. This is the story you tell in the community. This is your message to everyone. This is who you are.
And this is collective, or we're saying this for ourselves individually?
This is, you're saying this for yourself individually. Not as a group council, not as a mother, not outside the room. But as a leader, in this current role, my leadership statement is. Short and sweet, not too bad. Don't worry, I'll love the next session. You always have the opportunity to define our, who we are as leaders. Right? They should include your core values, maybe. Maybe they should inspire other people. You know? And now, maybe it's worth a thought to define who you are as a leader, maybe it doesn't matter. I don't know. All of the answers are okay. Alright, ten more seconds. I really wonder, my leadership statement, other people perceive me as what I stated my leadership statement.
That's what I was just thinking.
I can say all kinds of things, but I think he's gonna laugh at me. I think he's gonna go, uh-huh.
I think it's an interesting thing to think about. Because you say that I'm all these things, and I'm this as a leader. Does other people, do other people think that? Do my staff believe that's who I am? Does my community, do people actually think this about me? That's who I want.
I think you can also use it as a mission statement. Of something that you're, you might, you might be seventy percent there, but you want to continue to grow into it. And so you want to have that continue to, to approach you.
What's your message? Like, this is who I am. This is like, who I am as a leader, and that's important for people to understand and know about you. Okay. Okay, so, probably close enough at least for a few. And let's do a couple of share outs. Who would like to share out? And no, Alan's not gonna go first. Thank you, Rose.
I'm trustworthy and accountable.
That's your mission statement?
Yeah, that's it.
Your leadership statement? Nice, good. Okay, I'll go here.
I lead by example. I will never ask an employee to do something I would not do myself.
Nice. Nice, also good.
Did you really?
Wrote a bunch of words. And then I realized, and Chris had to hit on, I just put, be the best example.
Nice, nice. Very nice. Good.
Question and complete sentences. Out of here. Based on my training experience, I will lead by example. In actions to help motivate you to be the best possible employee for our department working on common goals to contribute service.
Nice. Very nice. Alright.
I said, a trusted partner who leads by example.
She said, yeah.
And then I didn't reflect, I couldn't find anyone else.
Uh, let's see, I said, as a leader, I strive to be a trusted voice of reason, to lead by example and to better my community.
Nice.
Um, I said, I am accountable to those who put me in a position to be their voice, to keep their trust and try to be what others think.
Nice. Alan?
Uh, as a leader that does community, I want to listen, motivate, move the city forward, be responsible with your thoughts and concerns, and lead with a positive place for me, my family and friends to live.
You ain't got a spicy ball.
That's great.
Okay. No, not the ball, his personality.
I went blue brown.
Blue.
Yeah, brown, blue or blue brown.
The comment?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Cause it had a lot in it. It had like all that.
Yeah.
My two, my two top colors been a couple points, and then I was a couple, I was a pretty close one.
So you were like in the middle.
Yeah, a little more.
I guess, I don't know. Cause they used to be, except Z.
Well, I, I actually wrote one a couple weeks ago.
She did. She didn't see these reports.
I did not see these.
No, she didn't get, I didn't see the good.
And so, I am committed to fostering effective leadership by actively engaging with key stakeholders to thoroughly analyze complex issues and address the most significant problems. And it goes on from there, but. It's a leadership.
Very conscious, yeah. Very nice. Thank you, good. Well, thank you, good share outs. So there's key elements, you know, anytime we're talking about, you know, being a conscious leader. So this is sort of what, you know, experts have said, that these are the most important elements, you know, as we're gonna be conscious leaders, emotional intelligence, having self-awareness, I think that's one of the toughest ones. Self-improvement, lead with humility and ethically, empathy, compassion, know your why. If you're interested in knowing like sort of your why behind some of this stuff, Simon Sinek does a fantastic job. He's got some great YouTube videos on finding your why. There are half-day training sessions, but there's some really great stuff, it's always fantastic. Being curious, you know, having wellness as part of it, being energetic and understanding your power as your role. Leadership is influenced, nothing more and nothing less, that was John Maxwell, appreciate him. Genuine leader is not a searcher for consensus, but a molder of consensus, MLK. So I would just share that, you know, it's not easy being in these leadership roles. Everybody needs to, you know, sort of understand that. I'm done with two, here we go. Support each other, you guys, it's hard. You know, it's healthy to always get to share and bounce things off each other's department heads. Like, who can you share some of these complex, challenging, hard things with? So be kind, are together, own your stuff, own it all. I spent yesterday for nine hours apologizing. I didn't have anything to do with what happened. I wasn't even the project lead, but something went sideways on a project and it turned into a social media disaster. And a lot of people are very upset, no bad intentions, minor things that happened. Some people stormed into meetings that shouldn't have and heard things they shouldn't have and shared things they shouldn't have. And it got very bad. Doesn't matter, own it. My whole time I just spent saying, we're so, so, so sorry, listening to how somebody feels. How can we fix it from here forward, you know, those kinds of things? And just supporting each other. And, you know, that wasn't my role, but my, you know, my team was taken a huge hit. And so my job is just to sort of take the hit and apologize. So sometimes that's what we have to do. And be kinder about it. People forget this too, enjoy it, right? We always feel the negative, it's a hard job, you know? Try to enjoy it, like, this is really awesome, that you're like molding these communities and doing all this great stuff. So, you know, try to pack time to do stuff and enjoy it. And just remember through observation, you know, as you're, as you're growing through this process, somebody's always watching. Everybody's watching, somebody's always watching. And it's just, you know, sort of being conscious of that, you know, it's lower than the top. But, you know, just have awareness to that, because it's how sometimes we get into trouble with some things. So I know people have to leave, and I have two, well, I quite, it's not quite a bit more, but a bit more. So I think what I'm gonna do is, I'll do, I'll go through roles and responsibilities real quick, and then I have one. Is it a hard four o'clock? What am I, four o'clock? Write it forward? What was?
Just one.
Just one, just you, and you were four? Okay, so we're gonna jump out of line, and I would like to come back to this, and I hope we can. But, a couple slides, we're gonna jump into something else that's, oh, actually I have five really great slides. I think you've got so much good stuff. I'm not showing. Yes, you do, yes, you do. So, this we typically do towards the end, cause it's kind of one of the tougher ones. But, sorry, hold on, I have to find it, cause I have all the slides I have, I'm sorry, right? Hold on one second. Okay, so. Oh, let's just go this way. Alright, so, I'm always curious what you feel that your role and responsibility is. You know, everybody has a different perspective. The community has a very specific perspective of what council's supposed to be doing for them. And you have your own perspective of what you're supposed to be doing. And somewhere in the middle of all of that is what you're supposed to be doing, right? Staff has specific roles and responsibilities, right? City clerk is supposed to maintain order, make sure that you follow the rules, follow Brown Act, do the things that you're supposed to do, vote on things when you're supposed to vote on things. That is their role, that is their power. You know, there's mindfulness to making sure that we respect each other's roles and responsibilities. And the staff, we have roles and responsibilities. And so, I'm always curious what you believe that to be. So with that, I would like each of you to share what you think your role is as a council member in a couple of words. What you think your specific role is to this organization, to the community, as a council member. What do you think your job is? And I, you know, and I think for departments, for everybody else, what do you think your role is? So with that, is already writing? I love it. It's like, it's like, right here, I'm writing, I'm doing my task.
Listening.
Yeah, no, it's good. So, you can, if you guys wanna write it, don't need to write anything down. So go ahead and write it down, just for a second. What you think specifically your role is? And then, once you've written that down, do you believe that you're on track with what you think your role is? Do you believe that you're adhering to what you think that is? Goes for staff too. My role is to serve and communicate and kindness, and my own track with that. Okay. Hello, we're about there. Alright. So, I have a lot of other fun stuff later, you'll miss that, that's okay. Good stuff. So, share. Jennifer, we'll start with you. What do you think your role is, or are you on track with it?
I'm vapor locking at three o'clock. I, I'm gonna be perfectly honest, I expected this today to be like a lot of numbers and strategic plan, and what we're doing, and what we're not doing, and the public to get to hear. So this kind of motivational concept, I wasn't emotionally or mentally prepared for. So, I'm not engaging as much as I otherwise would. I have a hundred things going on, and she's got somewhere she needs to be at four o'clock. So, I'm giving it my best, I'm
Okay.
Not, I, I'm literally ready to talk about strategic, what we're doing, what we're not doing, and where we're at.
So you're new here, you'll get that, that's okay.
I think that's what I expected today. That's why I was told to bring this, and that's kind of, and this has been a long day. I apologize, and that's my professional opinion, my expectation for today. So, I did put that I'm here to carry out and support the public's wishes, maintain a successful and safe city. And then I stopped, I had something else going on.
Okay, sorry, that's what I got. Thank you, good. Next.
I wrote checks and balances. And I said that within the realm of what we are allowed, I think, sometimes.
I was gonna put decision-making, but I didn't write it in there.
Maybe somebody else could.
I put that in line.
Did you? Yeah, I mean, it's just a lot going on in my mind right now, a whole lot.
My dad always says checks and balances, that's always my answer to them. Yeah, go ahead, Alan.
I put better my community for today, tomorrow and the future. And then, do you want me to do the second part now?
Absolutely.
And then my second part was, for today, yes, I think we're hitting the goals. But for the future, I think we need to look at that a little more.
Cool.
Oh, guiding the city through decision-making on big picture items, policies, safety, staff and community. And, yeah, I think that we, we're getting there. I don't know that we're, you know, we're there, but we're getting there.
Always did it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody from staff? You guys got anything?
The only thing I wrote was, for me, my number one priority is always take care of my people.
Nice. Good, good. Okay, let's take a quick five-minute break. And then if you guys have to scoot out, scoot out, and we'll come back in. Okay, so, trust tips are next. You guys have the handouts, right? So there's a little trust tips handout. We try to bring comedy whenever I can. Tom and Dad, you guys never go out and leave me home alone, don't you trust me? Yeah. I know, I live part of the year in California, and so I come back, and my son just got home from college, and he's like, how long do you stay? And I'm like, whose house is this? Okay, so I handed you the trust tips, right? So what I'd like you to do is, write down five words that mean trust to you. Like, what do you attribute trust? Like, when I think of trust, I, loyalty's a part of trust for me. I think kindness is a part of trust. Like, I have a lot of things that I attach to that word, I have a story around trust. So I'd love for you to maybe just jot down what your thoughts around trust are. I'm always a big fan of like defining something before we jump into like talking about it. So, I don't know. Five around trust.
Five?
Five words or five things?
I'm very flexible. So it can be a sentence, it can be a couple words, like, just give me some thoughts around trust. How's that? I accommodate every personality, so. Okay, anybody wanna share their words, thoughts or statements around?
I got four words.
Okay.
Honesty, loyalty, respect and willingness.
Good. What else we got, over here?
Integrity, honesty, communication, humility. And then one of the, we'll state it later, but just willing to fall on your sword when you've made a mistake.
I love this wording.
Yes, excellent, okay.
I said kindness, acceptance, openness, ability to disagree, non-judgment.
A non-J word, nice.
Uh, I have honest, respect, admit when you're wrong, honor your commitments, and stand by my side when things are good and bad.
Nice.
It's looking red.
There's a little blue in there.
I said walk in the walk, willing to do what others have to do, and you're not above anybody else. Demonstrating your trust.
Nice, very nice. Any other staff?
Respect, talk straight, don't sugarcoat things. Loyalty, recognizing it, and also putting it out there. And truthfulness. Again, it's a word.
That one doesn't count?
How's your cat?
Anyone else? Anything different, or?
Mine's pretty much same as Chris, I just added integrity, but I think Scott's seven thirty as well.
I like humility too.
Yeah, that was a good one too.
Yeah.
That's why you got a ball.
I think cause I just told you that.
One of the definitions, if you look it up, is a firm belief in reliability, truth, ability or strength of someone or something. On a one to 10, how well do you think you trust others? So yes, I wanna, I like to say in general, which I think is an important question, but you can also say, maybe within the organization, if you want to be more specific. How well do you think you actually give your trust? So on a one to 10, what's your number? Share that number, do you guys think your numbers are?
For the City of Angels camp, with our level of trust.
I'm an eight, unless you.
Are we at one out of five?
No, one out of ten.
We should do 10, okay.
Say one out of 10 the whole time, don't throw it.
I'm an eight as well, because I think that every single person in this room aligns with the same common goal. We might not get there the same, and we might have different behaviors and temperaments and attitudes and styles and all that. But I think that we align with wanting what's best for the city. Like, nobody, nobody disagrees on that.
I'm like an eight point five. I'm a nine, and I, I will give trust before someone's earned it. And then I'm also strong in forgiving. So, good, right or wrong. Unless it's like a repetitive, can't trust you kind of thing, then we have a different issue. But I generally, I'm pretty forgiving, depending on the severity of.
That's very, that's very chalric of you. Get mad, and then you get over it, and then you forgive, and they're like, wait, it's happened.
Before my blue comes out, I'm not as forgiving. It takes, it takes me a little time.
My husband's a French holder.
It takes me a minute. Anybody over in the team? Any numbers?
I don't know what my number would be, because I'm, over my years of law enforcement experience, trust but verify.
Yeah.
Try to give people the benefit of the doubt, the majority of the time, but I just wanna make sure that I'm not missing something.
You didn't have to do a polygraph, I did.
That's my speech.
Anything else?
I'm a six, trust is the year with me.
That's true for a lot of people. Yeah. So this slide's kind of interesting, signs of trust issues. So I like this as an activity. You know, how do we know if we have trust issues? So here's some sort of common things for you guys to think about. You know, do we focus on the negatives sometimes? Do you feel like you do everything yourself? Are you ever suspicious, do you hold grudges? Do you keep to yourself, avoid commitments? You smother, become orally connected, or to those you care about? So just kind of some interesting, you know, signals or signs that say, you know, am I really being trusting, or maybe I'm not, you know? We all, like, think we are, but, um, so just some cool information. Let's see. So I have, that was it for the four o'clock person, right? I know we're trying to get at here. Okay, so I'll go as quick as I can. So, so the trust type of words. So if we don't trust things that happen, right? Decline motivation, complacency, you know, participation gets withheld from people. That's very common, emotional decline. So, these are significant, right? These are really powerful things, and they can change and shift organization, they can shift a lot of things. Quiet quitting, I wanted to bring up, because it's really kind of a fascinating topic. You're hearing a lot more of it. Eight point eight trillion dollars in global economy drain. Fifty percent of the people who are working are always looking for another job. In some places, that's even higher. Six out of 10 people have a high level of disengagement in their jobs, which means they're quietly quitting, right? Because they're sort of on that decline, which doesn't boast well for retention, right? You know, when you think about those things. So, we're always thinking of, you know, trust is a huge factor, as an element of, you know, wanting to keep people in an organization. Especially harder, especially true in smaller organizations. So when you're a small organization, and there is a story or stories of mistrust, or those challenges that are out there, are we gonna be able to recruit people? If they're caring or understanding some of these things, true or not true, right? Cause stories can change into all kinds of things. So, you know, it's just sort of acknowledging or understanding that, you know, that stuff does get out there. If we do trust, the retention with trust is 61% higher. So if people believe that there is trust in an organization, that they will, they're 61% more likely to stay in their job. So specifically talking about retention, you know, people's number one, obviously, is salary and benefits, that is always true, you know? Their number one reason for staying. But 61%, there's only a 3% difference, I found this fascinating. I think this is a Gallup study. And, yeah, these were Gallup polls. That 61%, well-being, balance, health, stress, joy, inspiration, all those names. That's, that's like right there with salary and benefits. So things to think about, as you're doing and promoting and trying to bring people into the organization, right? So just found those, I love statistics. So just found those, I love statistics, that kind of interesting. Fifty percent of people want to do what they think best, they want to play their strengths, they want to do what they love. So just some interesting things. Fifty-three percent want job security, you know, they want to start seeking for the future, so just interesting stuff. Forty-three percent want COVID vaccination that align with their own beliefs. Obviously, that's a new one. Very interesting, I find, especially on that one. So my son, being 24 years old, and he's going into the law enforcement field, or working his way that, that way. He does have his bachelor.
Where's he live?
He's right up the road.
He did all of his testing, he's top of his class, he's a bodybuilder. A great guy, anyway, so he's aligning in this. So, but during COVID, when he was first graduating college, they all wanted vaccinations, and he didn't get one. So a lot of organizations wouldn't take him because of that. And he was top of the class, he had a degree, he does, he's head of security at a big company, like, what more could you want? And they're like, you're not vaccinated. He's like, oh, wear a mask, and they're like, no. So it's very interesting, so I, like, that's a personal story. Like, that's a very true, real, big thing right now, so.
That's still happening?
And that's still on it as a recent?
It lasted six months.
Wow.
Yeah, that people want to make sure, because a lot of people still doing boosters nationally, I know I'm getting ready to go overseas. It's still required that I have the original vaccination, boosters, they're not, they're okay with not. But to go overseas, I still have to show original vaccination card to do this for. So it's kind of interesting. Supposedly, they're raising it, lifting it next year, pending any other breakout, whatever's going to happen in the world, but. So just an interesting awareness thing. So if you're promoting and talking about retention or different things, maybe that if you have flexibility, I don't even know if you've talked about it. But something for you guys to think about, right? Hey, do we allow that? Are we okay with it? You know, is this a good thing that we can promote? So how do we do this? You know, we experiment. I think shadowing is a brilliant approach to people learning to trust and value each other. I've done it in a lot of organizations, I've found it very helpful, I especially think it's helpful for council, that's just my two cents. I think people need to understand what jobs are happening. I think it's good when staff, I've shadowed council, I shadowed over 150 different people in an organization to know what their jobs are like. Where I've spent one hour, four hours, eight. There's a lot to be said for that, people appreciate that you value them, you know, when that happens. You learn a lot, there's better customer service, deeper understanding. I think it's one of the best tools out there, it doesn't really cost money, it's time. It's not like you have to sit down and explain your job for four hours. I literally, I know what I don't want to ever do is be an electrical plan checker. I literally, after hello, I had no clue what he did. Other than I probably needed to give him a raise, that's just beyond me. Asking the hard questions, you know, when we're working through trust and those kinds of things, is just making sure we act hard questions. Practice what we preach. Training, you're doing training today, you know, I think training is always important, can't, one and done doesn't work. You know, like relationships, they take time, you got to work on them, build them. I'm a huge fan of feedback. One of the best things I've ever done, and my staff is to this day has said the best thing, is that even after a meeting, or they presented, or anything, feedback right away. Oh, you just presented, okay, two-minute coaching session. Hey, how did it go? This is what I think you did great, this is where I think you can tweak, right? Immediate feedback all the time. Be that mentor, be that coach to them after a council session. You know, you can spend a second to say, hey, you know, this went really well tonight, in the future, X, Y, Z. So have those really quick conversations, so things don't fester, you can get them out there, and you remember, right? So those are good things. When you give immediate feedback, there's actually statistically shown that you're two to three times more likely to trust somebody than you give that feedback immediately. So, um, yeah, there was all that, I have two slides I've been learning with. Learning to trust, um, let's see, we'll go by this. We've talked about some of this before, right? In the end, for me, kindness is the only one that matters. Mindful of your story around trust. And so I do have a question, do we want to walk through a service philosophy and build that? Do we want to go to a five? Because I need to sort of get a feel for, where are you guys at?
It would be better for someone to do a service philosophy, because I think then it always acts to go to, we, you have good.
Oh, I see.
Because I don't know what it is.
That's so funny.
I don't know what.
Yeah, I just sat through one of these for, um, the Department of, uh, no.
Guidance.
Uh, TSA, it was really interesting, like, two days ago.
Oh, yeah, 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 nobody needs this.
So here's what it is. A customer service philosophy is a set of guiding principles that a company uses to solve customer service issues, build better customer community and staff relationships. It directs every customer interaction. This customer service vision guides your approach to how you want employees to interact with clients and resolve issues, ensures you're upholding your core values and your standards. It's also great for performance evaluations, right? To make sure that we're upholding, you know, I, I tell people, it, it's basically how we, should we care. These are some standard ones in government that you see often, collaboration, honesty, resourcefulness, accountability, integrity. That doesn't mean those are yours, but it just gives you an idea of, you know, sort of what that looks like. We'll get to the philosophy in just a minute, so I love this one. Who picks, I can't get no satisfaction to be their whole music? You know, there is that. So, um, your customer service philosophy is also part of your brand, right? So when customers come in or deal with you, they, like, you're branded, like, oh, like Southwest Airlines. What do we know about Southwest Airlines? They're usually fun, right? They're pretty friendly, right? They are family orientated, that's an internal one, and they're on time, like, that's what they're known for, like, you kind of know that. And so it's sort of your message, how do you want to be known? The city of Pleasanton, I don't know if you're familiar with where that city is, it's in the Bay Area.
I grew up there.
So the city of Pleasanton, they were, they were brilliant.
This is new.
So they did the city of smiles. So they just said as a branding, they're like, we're just going to call ourselves the city of smiles. And they just did it on social media, they're like, from now on, we just make sure we all smile, we're just going to all be really nice to each other and smile. We have one philosophy, it's to smile. It's on the media, it's everywhere. And you know what? People say, when I hear them talk about Pleasanton, smiles.
They're so friendly.
They're so wonderful.
I think dental work.
There's that too. Alls I know is that, and I've grown up in that area, so I've known Pleasanton for 50 plus years. And what I would say is that nobody ever said anything about Pleasanton, other than, you know, they got a cool downtown. But now, they're the friendliest, nicest, coolest, neatest city ever, because they marketed to say that the city of smiles has their philosophy. It's hugely impactful, it's branding, it's accountability, it's buy-in. So if we want to do that, we can talk about, what is our service philosophy message? This is your opportunity to brand, how do we want to be known? What does that story look like?
We're the city of angels.
And it can be, it can be one.
It's right above you. Done, next.
There's a, you know, I don't know what the street of, the word on the street is now, but I will tell you, I, when I come to any jurisdiction, I talk to everybody. I talk to people who work at the hotel, I check in, and I talk to the restaurants, I talk to that. I have talked to 30 people already, and I'll tell you, I don't know that you have a brand as far as what your message is, and there's no cohesion in that. And I've had a lot of interesting feedback from, if I said, hey, in one or two words, what would you say? And it was very interesting. So we'll get into that, but what I will say is, there might be a benefit to doing something like this. So with that, all of you write down two words that you think makes sense to be your service philosophy. Like, when people come and work for the city, they come in, you know, get a permit, or do construction, or they come into your restaurant. What are you the city of? We are responsible and accountable, we are fun and innovative, we are, I don't know. So everybody write down two words that you think makes sense.
Or what we want.
Professional, efficient, helpful, creative, all kinds of things.
I'm looking at this from the standpoint of City Hall, when they come into City Hall. Hall, or coming to vote, permits.
Yeah. And it's something that you can hold people comfortable, like, hey, you know, we said that our service philosophy is to be friendly. And since I've got 47 complaints that you weren't, like, we should talk about friendliness, like, what does friendly mean? You know, that kind of thing. Or, and it's just, it's nice to get to like, hey, did you know that, you know, we're the city of, like, yeah, we're responsible and we're friendly, or whatever it is, like, that's just who we are. Okay, two words. Yes.
Attentive and understanding.
What was the first one?
Attentive.
Attentive and understanding.
She's so blue.
We love blue though.
Mine's, um, community strong.
Oh. Nice, what else we got?
Timely and quality.
Okay.
I put efficient and supportive.
Nice, Rebecca.
Uh, I put trustworthy and helpful.
We have a lot of different words.
Safe and friendly.
Well said.
Responsible and timely.
Also responsible and timely.
Say, just be nice and help.
Nice and helpful.
Nice and help. It actually, I mean, it's pretty good, I wanted to, not to share something, but.
Yes, please share.
Like, uh, I was at a conference recently, and the fire chief for a very large department changed all those policies. The very first thing is, if you get in trouble or they come in to talk to you about anything, first question is, were you nice? Did you help the situation? If not, we already have a problem. And the help goes into policy and procedure. So it's real basic.
I like that.
So every, 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 everything was, were you nice and did you help the situation? Nice and help.
I like it.
Pretty easy.
Yeah, nice.
I've sort of been using some of that here, it's been pretty challenging.
Very cool. All right. Pick one word.
What about the community?
Oh, community, yes, go.
You go.
What'd you say?
Friendly, I said friendly and responsive, especially the police, they're very.
Friendly and responsive, okay.
I'm not just trying to say.
You got some people's votes, God.
But, but, let me share a story quickly.
Okay.
I came from a company of 95,000 people in, in San Jose, a defense contractor. And we had a program that was called Just Say Hi, and we had little buttons. And that changed our community and culture at work. Because if somebody walked by you and didn't say hi, you turn around, pull on, say, hey, look up, just say hi.
Yeah, acknowledge.
Acknowledge, and I'd love to do that here. I think we did that once, somewhere something like that.
I put responsive and nice.
Nice and kindness keeps me up. All right, everybody gets one word, so pick one word. So everybody write down one word. Just one.
I don't remember what all of them.
What?
So, just.
Should we pick our own or somebody else?
You can do anything you want.
One of the favorites that we've heard mention.
One favorite word, whether it's your own or someone else's, what's one word you like now? One word. Because we're trying to get to have just two or three at most. So one word. Okay, everybody got a word? One word? One word, all right. Alan, one word.
Sorry. Why'd you pick on me first?
I'm sorry, because you always go first. You're a phone monster.
I don't even know if I want to go timely or community, let's go community. I think I heard somebody say community.
I did.
So.
So when community's strong, that was her two.
I know, they're.
Right?
So here's the thing, it's a service philosophy. So how am I accountable to community strong and a service philosophy? That doesn't give me direction.
Right.
Love the statements, love the branding, but that doesn't, how do I hold somebody accountable, say, well, were you community strong?
I think supportive. Supportive.
Okay, so we've got supportive.
Community's customer service, whether it's on the phone or in person, at the counter, in the field. I think that we need to be supportive in all of our ways.
Okay, so supportive is one, what else, what attentive word I got?
I like responsive.
What was, they're kind of similar.
I had attentive.
Yeah.
That sounds like a dog to me. Like, my dog is very attentive.
We had nice. My husband's been attentive.
She just.
So we had nice, helpful, attentive, responsive, supportive. Any other words that we want to throw on that list?
Kind.
Kind.
Well, we have friendly, kind.
So we have kind, okay, so here's a question, do we want kind or nice?
Intelligent.
All those in favor of kind, raise your hand.
It's a winner.
Yeah, it's a better word.
So we like kind as one of our service philosophies?
Yeah, be kind.
Be kind. Do we want a second word? We've got supportive, responsive, attentive, helpful.
Supportive or responsive.
What was the other one you said? Nice and what?
Me, I just said nice and help.
And helpful, okay. So supportive? Supportive or help, supportive or helpful?
Responsive.
Supportive.
So how many for supportive?
What was the second one?
Supportive or helpful?
Helpful.
Oh, I don't like helpful.
Supportive.
Yeah, I'll change mine to supportive then. I thought you were saying responsive.
So, so.
Oh, and we don't want to be responding, we want to be ahead.
We want to be ahead, we want to be at left of, left of the boom, we want not right of boom.
There to be no needs unmet, so therefore we're not responsive?
We're not responsive.
We don't need to be, because we've been proactive.
That is not a hard attack.
Now, we support you.
But I'm supporting, but you need one, we can call. And we will then be responsive and supportive from the call.
Well, here's the thing, you don't have to have more than, you can just be one. It can just be.
Kind.
Just be kind. Doesn't have to be that. So here's a question, do we like that the service philosophy is that just need to be kind? And that's it? So show of hands, will we leave it at kind first? So show of hands, if we leave it at kind, or show of hands, or we should have a second one?
It's how do you incorporate the second one if you've chosen the first one?
Yeah. So the idea would be like, our service philosophy is kind and helpful, or are we just kind? So the idea is that we're going to have one word, two words, or three? So that's what I'm trying to get at, it's like, well, maybe we all leave it at kind, because something like Pleasanton, their city of smiles, but the whole thing is it's just a smile.
Everyone just smiles.
Well, I mean, it's, you want people to be kind, but it's like, well, they didn't, they didn't solve the problem, but they sure were nice.
Yes.
That is.
So do we want more than just kind? We need a second one?
I want kind and supportive. I vote.
So we're going to vote.
Isn't there a better word?
How many supportive?
Supporting of what?
Well, my thought, my thought with supportive is that they're coming in or calling within need, they want to pay their bill, they want a full apartment.
That's my thought.
So we want them to be satisfied.
Correct.
With what, you know, I don't care if I, I mean, I do care, but I mean.
Responsive, you want them to be.
Leaving there going, God, now I got to call back, because, but she was really nice when she told me that I couldn't help me in any way, shape, or form. So I, I want them to be satisfied. And I, and I can offer another word for. It's like a solution. Oriented or proactive, or something like that?
We can't solve all the problems, I mean, some things are our responsibility, but some things are not. So.
So helpful.
But you can be supportive and not be able to do it.
If it's not, if it's not ours to solve, we help them find where to go.
Exactly.
This is a county issue, see ya.
I do agree with that.
We're sending the word. Tell them where to go.
Exactly.
It's basically what John said, it was, you know, were you kind and did you help the situation?
Okay, I love you. But like you said, sometimes you can't help. Well, you can be helpful.
You can be helpful, but not struggling.
You can put them in the direction. You know? But you can't always solve the problem.
Right.
Well, what do you have?
So I, I have so far, our kinders, kind of, do we like kind, do we help? That our service philosophy is that you're in kind, or you're being helpful?
Supportive doesn't mean anything to me, actually.
That's fine.
And I do think helpful.
I like proactive, but maybe it's just too big of a word.
Call us. And, and it really has nothing to do with us, but we are.
Direct them. Yeah, you're helping them.
We're going to help them, and it could be, we realize they actually need, like.
What about compassion? Do we like compassion, compassionate?
Instead of kind?
I've just thrown it out there, because it's on my, on my Google bit.
Yeah. What's, what does AI say?
It's more like, it's, services, or metaphorical.
Community.
I think kind is a good.
Gracious, that's like a restaurant, right?
I think kind is a good one.
Okay.
I think kind, good.
Helpful?
Helpful.
Okay, be nice and help.
It's going to have to be two words.
There are any cities who have like surly.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, I mean, helpful, if you look up there, those are the top ones that come up in cities. We're professional, or we're efficient, we're helpful, we're effective, we're creative. Those are kind of the primary ones that come up, so you've got.
Those don't represent us. I mean, they, you know, they're just so, um, they're not angels can.
What's it saying? This is, this is your brand.
Helpful.
Okay. So.
How about innovative?
You already have the support value. This is about how people are supposed to treat other people, okay? Are we gonna vote on kind and helpful? Are we there?
Do it.
Yes?
Yeah.
All right.
Kind and helpful.
Kind and helpful, all right, good stuff. They're kind and helpful. Um.
Bad for people.
This is, are we gonna put this up somewhere, like on a sign?
Hey, we did get it, guys.
All right, so that's my joke.
You know what I mean?
Of course, human personalities don't love those. Did you, right, you're like, what? That's so sad.
Jen was saying, what about above and beyond?
That's our, that's our.
We're above and beyond.
It's like, it's like.
Yeah.
I think. No, to your point, Jennifer, it's a good question, I think to your point, it can be, that can be like a performance metrics. So like, if you're kind and you were helpful, were you helpful? Did you go above and beyond? So that could be a performance metrics element of your helpfulness?
Right, so we wanted, yeah, cause I think when we're, when we're starting back, and we asked, you know, was staff.
Did you, yeah.
You know, were they helpful?
Did they go above and beyond?
Did they go above?
That's a piece of being, right, so that's an element, so it goes right in there, so any of your performance metrics, that could be one of the boxes. All right.
Both kind and.
Yes, my top ten tips, um, evaluate and what influences you, people are influencing all over the time. Beware social media, it's just, I spent eleven hours just straight going with a social media nightmare, it's, you would be so surprised at what happens out there, and you know that too. Be careful what you post, your leaders in the community, the stories to tell, if you're going to do it. I don't know what your policies are, but you've gotta be so crazy mindful these days, just saying one word can trigger things. I said human, and they're like, so it's a man, it's human, and I was like, whoa, I was just probably saying human.
Right.
Sorry about that, so like, it, it's a big deal, be really, really mindful of that kind of stuff. If you don't have a social media policy, make sure that you have one. Maybe one, yeah, so. Oh, really, all right. Um, uh, you know, what influences you, you know, we talked about that, I had a bark story, but in interesting time, I'll skip it, but it's kind of a cool story if I get a chance later. Um, deal with fears, they're real. Be super forgiving, if you're not a forgiving person, learn about it, you know, read about it, figure it out, because you've gotta figure out ways to move on, um, other stuff, otherwise negativity grows. I am one of those people, I believe in faith, I think, um, all things are possible. Um, if there's one tip I can ever leave anybody at any time, with anything, it's to ask a better question. Um, is this the best question I can ask myself? You know, are we being kind? Am I living up to my core values? Am I being thoughtful on social media? Just ask a question, ask a really good question. Uh, maybe you can use those little cards, get a coach or a mentor, have a trust tribe. You guys have a lot to deal with, there's a lot of people to talk to, and it takes time to earn that. But, you know, if there's not somebody in, in your media, which is always hard to do in an organization, get somebody outside of it. Friends and family are great too, but professionally sometimes, it's really, really helpful. Um, so I think mentors and coaches are awesome to have, so one of my recommendations. I'm all about energy, as you know, um, move the mind, learn and grow, move the body, you know, move your energy. That's just more who I am. Become master communicators, if there's, you know, something that, um, you wanna move, learn how to communicate, so that you can influence, um, and show deep care. Um, implement your plans, you know, we talked about implementation. Um, I'll skip, we did have some stuff on accountability, um, I just could go on and on, right, I have too many slides. Um, accountability needs responsibility, accept it on your actions, see it, own it, solve it, do it, right? We make a lot of excuses. Um, we won't get into this, but, um, the slide is there if you ever wanna play around with it. Um, this is the definition of excuses, we rationalize, um, you know. Why do we make excuses? I think this is phenomenal, um, this is the main reason why people make excuses, you should pick out which one is yours. Um, you know, fear of failure, to be embarrassed, success, fear of change, uncertainty, fear of responsibility, making mistakes, um, those kind of things. So, um, we don't have time to go through this one today, but, um, you know, how do we get rid of fears? Um, these are just some, if we had time, we'd go through an activity to sort of release that. Um, excuses, these are the consequences if we make a lot of excuses. Um, we lose opportunities, we don't grow, we can be self limiting, there's a lot of regrets, the negative Nelly. Negative Nelly, um, you know, one, one negative thing starts, it all follows, um, blocks creativity. The most common excuses, there's not enough time, that is hands down the number one excuse in the world, is I have no time. We have time for what we wanna have time for, hands down, so it's a bad choice. Um, not having enough money, don't have the education my age, so there's a lot of common excuses that feed into our fears. So, there are kind of some interesting things to look at when you wanna go home and look at this. That it just won't work, or I'm not inspired enough, those are super common experiences or excuses. Um, there's a lot of tools, right? What are the, how do we restore the question? Having new mantras, um, don't compare ourselves to others. Uh, even the computer's getting tired, you see how slow that was? Um, leaving the past alone where it belongs, don't spend too much time there, ask better questions, all that good stuff. Um, refocus on the solution, um, talk to somebody about it, all good, you know, tools to help, take responsibility on it. Phew, lots of good stuff, so, be kind and patient, right? Maybe that should be the mantra, let's be kind and patient. My best pivot questions, if you feel like you're making excuses for anything, these are the best questions I ever think to ask. And why am I making this excuse right now? What do I need to do to get beyond this limiting belief I have? What am I gonna miss out on? How do I feel about it? So, these are just some good excuse questions, if you wanna take those home, um, I find them to be really helpful. I also have these taped to my computer, I have stuff everywhere on my computer. Um, but it helps to remind me, like, when I'm making an excuse, I'm like, oh, man, you know, what am I gonna miss out on? Or how's this gonna affect my health every time I make this excuse? So, just some good questions, best practices for accountability, you have these, um, we've talked about all of them. And, of course, I have to end with a few jokes, um, they're more afraid of you than they are of me. Uh, my number one goal is to always speak well of others, my number two goal is to make sure I don't end up like the rest of the losers in my department. So, you know, be thoughtful, be kind, all that good stuff. It's been my honor to serve you, you all were awesome, thanks for hanging in there. Okay, I blasted you the last one, so, I'm here for questions if you need anything, but I know you'd rather do the game, having a glass of wine, but I appreciate the time, so.
Um, and I really appreciate this, I think, you know, what it comes down to is just making sure that we're focusing on how we communicate with one another, getting on some page, having a lot of communication, um, is, it's gonna be tough. There's a lot, there's a lot planned, there's a lot of objectives, there's a lot of tasks in the budget. They're not gonna happen fast, or we're going to pull the string on the sweater and realize we didn't, that arm was gonna fall off. So, um, I think it's also embracing that we may have some failure, there's gonna be some bumpy, bumpy road ahead, um, in order to get these things done, and making sure that, you know, you as council are specific to us in terms of what, what is that accountability metric that you wanna see from us? Um, and, you know, we're working in the background, putting systems together to be able to track, you know, data. We didn't have that before, so we started from zero, or we could have taken tally marks.